Sheriff's have any supporting evidence?
We're next door to Harry Kelly.
I believe that's the sheriff. That's, that's who you believe, you know? If you don't like the story, you don't like what he said in the story, then you should take down. She didn't contact me though, of course. She contacted Seth and to like, to, you know. Hey, how's? She's an expert. Well, yeah. Yeah, that's, it's really nice.
Well, this is not something you.
I know, I know.
If you have something else, you're going to be presenting it.
I had, I did that completely wrong.
I used that when I first started.
Well, and it's different.
Laura Freese would create these power grids and then I'd have to go in front of this vision Iowa board and cash awards and present.
Yeah.
And it's like, it's not even my old works.
Yeah, yeah. Speaking, so the former mayor that I was trying to go, when I said to that, as you know, was just like sports, like hand shop. Jumped, especially considering. Just driving. Cause I, I contacted him, so I.
Did you get a hold of Strube?
Well, no, I got a hold of, uh. Contact, actually contacted community to see if he had, to somebody. And here, uh, I'm trying to arrange it. Anything to be, uh, for you. He's on my, right?
And he's on.
Here at the, anybody else can help them here.
So that's, that's who that we.
You mean, uh, oh, C C.
I am, I am, I just, I just read there.
There's something we like that. One went on right where this move. What do you see that?
Right, son? I've been thinking a while.
How are you?
Doing well, and you?
Cool, okay.
Yeah. I thought we were out there skiing. Complaining, it was too cold. And my son was like. And then he said some Iowans came through and they're like. But can you imagine complaining about the cold and running off?
That, that in itself, another story. Thank you.
You bet. It's one for you and one for Steve.
Risk. We're cold. Be a long walk.
Barb's budget I handed on.
Yeah.
They would need a copy of Barb's.
Well, tonight, very almost with so choose.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting to order. I will let you know the meeting is being recorded. If you do not want to be refunded, you can leave. You are listening. Assistant listening device is over here if anyone needs. First item on the agenda this morning, Barb Schreger, our conservation.
Good morning. Um, also with me are the conservation board chair, Kristen Torres Dahl and Finn Wagner, also board member, and Dan Langrich. So, we're two hats, so, um, this, I, what I'm going to do today is I'm going to start off with my annual report and then we'll talk budgets at the end, so, um. I changed my title from the past. It used to be a, a year review, um, but when the budgets were handed out from the auditor's office and the board of supervisors questionnaire, it made me really think about what we do and, um, so I wanted to highlight those, those services. And thank you again for that, that exercise, because it actually was very valuable. Um, not only did I fill that out, but I sent it to the entire staff and to each board member and they sent me back their survey answers and then I put them together and, and then returned it to Ben as one document, so, um, it's just not my answers, it's everybody. So, um. Next.
Then I T forward the slides for Barb.
Did it on here, but not.
It went on here.
It did it on the laptop on the desk I T, but it did not do it on the three screens in the room. Love technology.
It's great. Every day.
There we go. Thank you. Well, um, our mission statement or the purpose of the county conservation board is to provide the public with wide range of opportunities for quality outdoor recreation while wisely managing our natural resources and encouraging land stewardship through natural history and environmental education and programming, so, um. To do that, we have, uh, the luxury of living in a beautiful place, so we have an opportunity to, um, for folks to recreate on lakes, on the lake, ponds, river, um, trout streams. Our educational programs in every school district, in every grade level, um, we're at the private schools, um, every assisted living and elder care, and we work with every public library. Uh, the, and the W C C B, Winnaishet County Conservation Board, you're going to see that abbreviation throughout, so, um, our land management encompasses, you know, parks, trails, wildlife areas, trout streams, uh, campgrounds and, uh, river access points. And, um, we have to talk about Larry Reese, you know, over forty-one years with the county. Uh, he manages, uh, a photo library that he's continually adding to and that photo lab library is actually utilized statewide by other county conservation boards, um, the scenic byway. Um, his photos are actually, um, on the national, in the other scenic byways in Iowa, so, um, that, uh, is a, oh, not just a county service, but even a statewide service and then is, uh, some of his photography is also kind of a hobby and, and he, uh, identifies insects through his, uh, photography and so we find new species each year that are new to the county, to the state of Iowa and even North America. The past few years, we've been fortunate to also include the waste reduction education program and, um, have developed some excellent programs that match with the, uh, science standards, so they're very popular with schools and we, uh, get a lot of, of requests for programming. Uh, Evan worked with, uh, the city of Decor on, uh, Decor on a, um, home composter distribution and this year, a hundred and forty-four composters went out and, and the idea of that grant and that program is to reduce the waste going to the landfill and extend the life of the landfill and so, um, that's one that we can, um, pinpoint, you know, we're directly making an impact. So, and then he also worked on signage at the recycling sites and manages the website and social media. And the drum roll, we're proud to announce, um, we have been awarded the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-four outstanding, outstanding environmental education program for three or more educators, so, um, I don't have a plaque yet. Um, they called on December twentieth to, uh, let us know and, and they being the Iowa Association of Naturalists and the Iowa Conservation Education Council, so, um, you know, naturally it's Larry, Hannah and Evan. They're our, our, our primary team, but, um, we don't do anything where it's just one person. Nobody's pigeonholed and so John and Ryan and the office staff, everybody's been out in the field or in the classroom working with students, uh, you know, John, um, has done everything, um, and Ryan, even our maintenance person, teaches archery in the school and helps with fishing, so, um, and we've had summer interns. Externs is an interesting program. It's actually a, a, a science teacher or a teacher in the, in the, uh, school system who in the summer comes and, uh, uh, works for us for thirty days and so that's been an excellent program. And then, uh, we offer discovery camp and with our discovery camps, we have camp counselors, so, um. Grad sum that'll work, awesome. Yes, so, and three or more, we're talking about, that's, that's competing with the big counties, Hope County and Lynn County. So, uh, the, the staff has done a phenomenal job at that. So, some of the things that helped us get there, um, you know, we offer year-round programming, uh, Earth Day. We had seven hundred people come to that half-day event at the fairgrounds, um. Uh, Larry's photos, he's up to over seventeen thousand photos that are on his Flickr account that these, um, other educators can utilize. Um, because we're, uh, Winnaishet County is a bird-friendly county, we were, uh, partnered with, um, Iowa Young Birders and, and, uh, had them come for a field trip and by, uh, continually doing those kinds of connections, uh, Winnaishet County's bird-friendly status, we're at the highest level, we're at the high flyers. So if you go to their we- website, not every county or organization that is in that bird-friendly program is at that high level, but we offer enough variety of programming and, um, habitat works that we've been able to reach that status. Uh, in October, we offer trunk-or-treat program out at Lake Meyer and we had over nine hundred folks at, attend that. And, um, again, uh, I talked about our, our discovery camps and, and, um, at, for us to be able to put on those camps, we need extra help and so not only a summer intern, but that, uh, extern, uh, works with those young students at, for that summer camp program. So, some of the numbers that got us there, um, have increased over the years and this year we had thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one people attend our programs or participate, so, um, phenomenal numbers, climbing and, and obviously, uh, waste reduction education has contributed significantly also. So many times it's everything's Decorah, but our pride chart here shows that, um, no, it's not. We're, um, in every community and offering programming, um, to a wide range of, of, you know, not just Decorah, so. We also, uh, take advantage of volunteers to be able to, um, do what we do and, uh, we track their hours that they, um, contribute and, um, using, uh, we were, are part of the service enterprise and so they have a formula for us to calculate. Um, so their value, those volunteers are over forty thousand dollars, so, and, um, that is, uh, those people have done, the volunteers, everything from trail count to working with school groups, um, helping bird, build bluebird boxes. So trail count's a, a big one. The R S V P volunteers sign up for our in-person trail count and that's a, um, two-day count. Uh, they start at six in the morning and do a trail count till eight o'clock at night and, um, we've been keeping track of those numbers and we try to hit the same weekend between, uh, Nordic Fest and the county fair, so, um, we're pretty consistent. And then we have actual trail counters out on the trails and, um, those, uh, every year the weather seems to be nicer and more people are recreating, so, um, this year we actually put it out in February and kept it till November. Uh, there is a black, uh, an empty space on the one trail counter. We had a, um, technical difficulties, but, um, the, um, the, probably the biggest message is, is we got a lot of people utilizing our bike trails, so. So the campground at Lake Meyer, um, the usage is pretty steady, uh, but, um, what I pulled out of this is, is for you to see that, um, fifty-eight percent of the county out of, uh, fifty-eight percent are out-of-county users and where average stay is three nights. And average stay at Kendallville is also three nights, but eighty-seven percent of those folks that come to Kendallville are out of county and, and that's primarily the, the upper Iowa river is the draw for that. Um, so the numbers may be down a little bit. We had flooding, so the campground was closed for a while. Um, we also had a drought, so we had low river, um, even at Lake Meyer, extreme heat, you know, why come out and sit at the campground where you could be at home in your air conditioning? So, um, the environment, really, the weather impacts our camping a lot. So another thing we were able to do tourism-wise for the county was to host the Iowa County Conservation Board System. Uh, this was a statewide conference. They were here for three days, two nights, so it boosted our local economy and businesses. Uh, we had two hundred and thirty-nine attendees, so. Our grants are down, um, but, uh, it's not because we haven't been trying. I put on their, the unfunded request, so you can see that, you know, we, we would be, um, doing pretty well if, if everybody said yes to the, our applications, but, um, we, uh, continually tried. In fact, last week we submitted another grant, so. Some of the ones that we were funded on were the streambank restoration at, um, Sindalar Wildlife Access. This was our, uh, phase two. Uh, last year we did part of the stream. This year, um, we were able to complete the project and so the, the entire section of county-owned trout stream is now restored and in the photo here, you can see there's a little kind of horseshoe piece that comes into the county, um, and, um, that was, um, not into the county, into the private property. That section was also, uh, restored. It's, it's between site one and site two and, and the Trout Unlimited and Trout Fishing Angler Groups, uh, came together and they funded that private property section, so that, when I say the entire stream was restored, they did, they took care of that private section.
Barb, do you have any idea why, any guess, why you think, why it might be more difficult these days to land, land grants?
Uh, there are, there's a lot of competition, um, there's more counties doing trails. There's the push for, you know, they see how Decorah and, you know, Winnaishet County has benefited by having all these folks come from Minnesota and Wisconsin and other states and, and, you know, even Des Moines, we get a lot of folks that are coming up here to recreate on our trails and rivers, so, um, there, there's, you know, s- competition. And then, um, you know, we've, uh, I know our C and D is busy, um, a lot of times, you know, we were able to utilize, um, Laura Freese. She had a lot of experience with some of these larger, um, you know, when you're talking multimillion-dollar grants, that was her specialty. She was an ace at those kinds of things and, um, I, I'm, I'm going too many different directions, I, you know, and, and no offense here, folks, but when, when, when I asked for a new, a trail person a long time ago, um, it was, you know, I, I was going too many different directions and then we weren't able to keep that, so I'm back to, um, I'm not getting to spend the time on, on these grants that I, that you really need to be able to, um, unfortunately, so, um, but, um, we're still trying, so.
Where's, where's the Sindlar?
This is on the Bluffton Blacktop, um, before you get to Bluffton, so. And, um, one really great part of this is we partnered with Secondary Roads, so all of that, um, you know, when they peeled back all of the streambanks that were cut high, peeled it back, created spoil piles. Secondary Roads came in and, and utilized that and so those piles are already gone. Those, uh, their crew came in right away and, and, um, have been able to use, utilize that dirt. So, a great partnership that way. And then we, they did that last year also. Another project was, uh, that has been completed is the Dry Run Green Belt Wetland. Um, this is a partnership with the city of Decorah. They were actually the ones that were awarded the grant and, um, so the city, um, utilizing county property, we're able to put in these structures that will capture the runoff and, um, do a couple of things, hopefully, you know, capture those nutrients and pollutants so we have better water quality, but also reduce some of that flash flooding that it will occur on Dry Run Creek and impact Decorah. And for us, that in the future will also protect our infrastructure, so, um, it's got a unique, it's not just a pond. Um, it kind of, you know, you kind of snake around through that the water does and that deposits those sediments or, and chemicals, so. And for us, for, uh, bird-friendly Iowa, um, I envision at some point putting a bird blind out there and, and folks being able to bird watch at that wetland.
How many acres is that, uh?
The wetland's only two acres.
How many acres does it drain or drains into it?
I was going to get that to you, sorry, um, so I will get back to you on that.
That's behind wicks.
Yes, wicks, correct. We, um, have been taking advantage, the Build the Bags Grant, um, this is, uh, those plastic bags that, um, people use for grocery shopping get, uh, turned into actually plastic and, and in this case, the plastic recycling in Cedar Falls makes picnic tables and benches and, and almost every year we've gotten this grant. Uh, this year we, uh, put six picnic tables at Kendallville and those, uh, really, uh, help us save money on maintenance. They're, they're pretty much maintenance-free. We've also, um, got several, uh, tree planting grants and have put those on county property, Walden Pond, Freeport Park and Trout Run Trail. I'm still working with FEMA, so I don't have an exact number, but we're over ninety thousand that will be recovering for storm damage. And, um, so we're going to talk about funding. Your support helps us continue to provide the Winnaishet County citizens with top-quality programming and services. So, I didn't leave us a lot of budget time, but our budget has, um, a zero change. I, you know, I changed what we had for phone and internet and, and changed a couple line item numbers, but it still equals a zero as far as increase or decrease in the overall budget.
Just as a point of information, Barb, I had one question and then went through that, you use a certain amount of contract mowing, uh, for members of farms and so forth. You've got a thirteen-five contract on that and then you have a line item for, uh, a part-time, part-time mower. That is a, actually a higher. That is a actually higher cost than even your maintenance agreements. And I'm wondering, for that expense for wages, benefits, the equipment, trucks, fuel, and the rest of that, is that really cost-effective for conservation?
Okay, so um that line item is, I inherited that title, but all of our interns go under that title. So the so the intern that helps with environmental education and um discovery camps is also under that uh line item. So and um our summer interns do more than just mow grass. Um they uh help split firewood, they help uh clear the bike trail, they help us patch the bike trail. Uh we do uh any natural resource management, um especially if if it involves a chainsaw, we need to have two people there. So especially when we've had those windstorms or even any amount of wind, the the Prairie Farmer Trail uh is such a narrow corridor. There isn't structure to hold those that to hold that, so we always have trees coming down. So, you know, you have to send two people out to uh clear up trees. So uh it says mowing, but it 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 it's just summer seasonal help uh in general, so they they don't just mow, and um.
Maybe Ben can change that for seasonal maintenance. Well, constant maintenance and operations.
Yeah, so, but um in some of the areas uh we've put out bids before and not had anyone bid on it, so then it comes back to us to maintain. And then some areas, it's just easier for us to maintain it, especially if we have a lot of field trips or public utilizing that. Um so um for um, and like Lake Meyer, we're right there. So it it doesn't make sense to have somebody come into the lake to mow.
Yeah, another point that I was, that I thought of is when you're you're camping fees and so forth, have you considered using an online reservation system like Decorah does, for example?
I'd love to. We just don't have the staff to man it, because if somebody makes an online registration, somebody has to go out and mark that campsite that it's reserved. And I don't have that kind of staffing to do that.
Will you have a campground host?
Um, but the internet, it does, the system would have to be set up in our office. And then I I'd have to have somebody to communicate to that host that, you know, hey.
Yeah, we found it in Spilwell, for example, we used, we went on to a online camping.
Right, and you talked about that in the past and and.
They've, that has actually reduced, significantly reduced the amount of time commitment a city maintenance man, because he doesn't have to do that. And it's worked out, it's worked out very well, and I, you know, I I can't call the name of the company that we use, but David works for small campgrounds, and it's been very, has been very helpful.
So our campground hosts are a private contractor, and so they're not, you know, they don't come in and and are connected to our system to where they would see those kinds of announcements. I'd have to um, I'd have to check with IT, cause you know, uh security-wise, I wanna make sure that we don't have somebody, not them, but you know, we wanna make sure we keep our firewalls protected.
Yeah, I see it as more of an opportunity to expand usage.
Definitely, definitely.
When I go in on looking, just out of curiosity, look at your, at the website, I know that Decorah Campground, for example, as soon as they open up reservations, that thing populates uh quickly for the usage. But I think, you know, you may have an under, a kind of well-underutilized campground.
Well, I I happen to to know their system very well. My husband was a manager there years ago, and they have two people dedicated to just doing that, and and we don't have that luxury. And so um that we do have a system with our Iowa County Conservation System for for um being online, and there is also fees with that. And so right now, um it hasn't worked for us, but um we continue to evaluate it each year.
Oh, it's, it was Pitch Camp was the company that we.
Yes, and I checked into that, too.
They were, that's been a very good, good move for that, for that campground.
Okay, but thank you for that information or reminder to to review it each year.
Now, um back in two thousand, we were trying to decide whether or not to move back to Northeast Iowa. This, the work that the board and your team do in conservation was such a huge um part of that decision. The beauty of Northeast Iowa is not replaceable, and we're very lucky to live here. And I wanna thank the board and Barb and everybody at Conservation for the work you do. It's, it makes a difference in Winnaishie County, it's why a lot of us choose to live here rather than elsewhere.
Yeah, we are very fortunate to have beautiful resources, and and I'm fortunate to have a fabulous board to work for. And um we've got the best employees. They're dedicated, they're hardworking, um and uh we get things done, so.
We'll have to address that waste reduction grant.
It is included in there right now, so I guess that's really up to the landfill board and how they want to.
We put it in just, I figured it would be easier for Ben to cut later than to try to add it, so um it.
And we did talk, Barb and I talked about that, do you want it in or not, cause we wanna make sure we have it covered, so.
And at the time, uh everything's up in the air, so we just thought it was uh easier to cut later, so.
I wonder if it would be worth now asking IT to help look into the online registration thing that they may have other.
Well, I'll go up there next, yes.
As a way of covering our bases.
Yes, I can do that. I'll see if John's available.
And we'll have any other questions?
Okay, you can shoot me an email if you if you think of something, and um appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
This is another one I handed out last week, they would need a copy.
I don't look right now.
Yeah, the printout came out this, came this month.
That on the health board, as I said.
Yeah.
Yes.
I handed out this morning. Where do you wanna go, Krista?
Okay, all right, so uh you do have a copy of the budget in front of you. Um so first of all, I've practiced all this with, last year when we were here, we were a completely different agency. We were a Medicare-certified home health and public health agency, and now we are a decertified public health agency. So completely different structure in some of the things that we do as far as the different services. Uh and so we now have two part-time nurses. Um they are fluctuating between twenty-four and twenty-eight hours a week, um of both of them. Uh having that flexibility really helps us in in being able to, one, cover for vacations or illness, as well as being able to provide all the different services, so that uh I can be doing what it's supposed to be doing instead of having to kind of fill in, uh so.
Can I ask quick?
Yes.
When I did the, of course, when you do this part of the budget, we don't do the payroll stuff yet, but I put them in as full-time at this point. Do you think that, basically for health insurance, do we need to ask two full-time people in that section or not?
Um.
Cause that'll be the next.
They have health insurance covered elsewhere.
Okay, so I could take the health insurance out.
Correct, correct. Um and so they, you know, Barb says that she's got the best employees. I think all of us as departments would say that we all have the best employees, because I would say I have the best.
Well, Winnaishie County is lucky that way.
We are lucky, we're fortunate that we have people who want to come work for us. Uh and so these nurses have been a blessing to us. They both have public health experience. And so they know some of the things that we have to do, such as uh immunization audits and and some of the other services that we offer. They understand the importance of service to the community, making sure that our residents are being taken care of. So that's a big benefit to us. We're not having to spend hours or weeks trying to train somebody on how to do some of the different things. Uh now granted, things have changed since they were in public health. And so we are taking the time to making sure that they understand this is how our uh en- agency entity has to go ahead and provide these services, because there's been changes with different grants at the state level, so those reporting tools are are all a little different. They're quick learners, though, I will say that. So that's been phenomenal. Because we are a public health agency, um we've been able to reduce some of our expenses. Um and of course, we're trying to track some trends, trying to go ahead and track the data for what are we doing now as a public health agency? We only have about six months of data underneath our belt so far, just public health. And so it's been a busy six months. Lots of things are happening. Uh we now have kind of a new emerging uh disease out there, which is throwing a few um throwing a few challenges at us, okay? So again, this is more data, more trends that that we wanna be able to track, okay? Um one of the, it can influence them, okay? Uh it's still important for us to make sure that we take the time to get messages out to the population. So the thing is, different age groups utilize different platforms for getting that information. Print media and radio maybe work great for one population style. Another age group, uh they want Instagram, another in uh age group would really prefer TikTok. Uh you know, so we have to take a look at all of those options, and so making sure that we're getting the messages out to those people is important, okay? And just moving along, um so I wanna share with you that we have transitioned to VaxCare. Um so we no longer have to buy our vaccines, um and specifically talking about flu, COVID, a lot of the adult vaccines. Um there are some vaccines, such as the rabies um preventive vaccine that we have to give um to some of those um vet tech students, as well as our TB solution. We still have to buy those. But all of the other vaccines, we now get those from VaxCare. What they do is they pay us the administration fee for providing that service. So this past year, what they've had to do is they bought back the flu vaccine, we had to buy that because of timing, they paid for it. And uh we are now being able to get the administration fee. With each different vaccine, the administration fee will vary. It will vary because of the vaccine, number one, and number two, because of the insurance plan. So just because uh two people at this table might have this, might have a well-marked insurance plan, there might be a difference in those plans, and so they would reimburse at different rates, okay? It's, yeah, but it's all fun, it's all fun, some of the things that we get to deal with, right? Um but it's a, it's a boon, all right? So it's a good thing that we're not having to spend the money to buy the vaccine, because that was very costly, particularly the COVID vaccine. Uh and we know that those costs have actually gone up some more, so.
State or federal program, the VaxCare, what is that?
VaxCare is just a private company. Uh and so there are agencies across the state of Iowa, across the country, who have been able to really increase their uh vaccine availability like we have. So we provide flu, we've threatened COVID, of course, um but we also provide RSV for adults, um the pneumonia, the shingles, lots of different vaccines for adults. We could branch off and provide those vaccines for children, too. That is not something that we've opted to do at this time, because we work closely with the Vaccines for Children program, uh and that's free vaccine for the state. So VaxCare is only adults, VaxA, right now, right now, it's only adults, yes, okay? So we do have um just some different grants. Those are basically state grants. Right now, it's status quo funding, so that's local public health, emergency preparedness, and what we call the I-4 grant or the immunization grant. Um. When I go on and take a look at some of the different grants that are offered through our Iowa Grants Program, there's not necessarily a whole lot that are for public health, but we have the option to take a look at some of those national grants. So like uh grants from NACO, which is the National Association of City and County Health Organizations. They actually have some grants for very large health departments, and they also have grants for very small health departments. And so typically, uh we've not been able to qualify for some of those different uh grant opportunities. But again, now that we've got some um some new employees that have the excitement and have the energy and want to focus more on the public health side, we can do that. Um during our community health assessment that we conducted back in twenty-two and twenty-three, that's where the community said, these are our needs. So we're able to utilize those identified needs, which specifically is housing, mental health, substance abuse and use, um food insecurity, and older adult care. Those were the topics that were, came through loud and clear, and so we are really trying to take a look at what are the grants out there that we can focus in on those energies, so that we can make a difference in people's lives, okay? So prevention is where public health is at, right? So prevention can be uh disease prevention, so flu, preventing COVID, preventing other communicable diseases. So that's part of a grant that we do. Um we investigate those diseases when they are reported to the state. And that could be the salmonellas, it can be the E. coli's, those are the tummy bugs, for instance. Um it can be portosis, it can be so many other diseases that we end up having to investigate. But in the same token, it's the prevention aspects of simply washing your hands, right? We can say that till we're blue in the face, um but we still need to remind people that we need to have people wash their hands to prevent norovirus, to prevent this, to prevent that, okay? Um so that's all that prevention work that really has to happen. We're able to do that in uh a variety of settings, some through our office, some some through the information platforms where we share that information. Otherwise, it is through some of the health fairs that we go to. There's been a number of those. And of course, we have different ages that come to those different health fairs. So we make sure to talk about, uh when we're at the uh dining site for their health fair proceedings, we made sure to have information for that particular age group there. So we had information about happy de-clans, okay? Um and so that was great to be able to tailor that education for those folks. Um few other things just to share with you. Um we do have one home care aide and one homemaker. So we have been approved as a home and community-based service waiver for homemaking program, okay? Meaning that people who have uh like Title 19 or are part of the, one of the managed care organizations and have been approved for the waiver, that is something that happens at the state level, we have no control over that. Um they can still get some homemaking services. So homemaking services is simply, can be washing the dishes, because they don't have enough fat to do that, helping to do vacuuming, helping to do laundry, remaking the bed. Those are simple activities that can help keep people in their own homes where they want to be, okay? And so Winnaishie County hasn't had a provider for the home and community-based services waiver program for several years. And so we put application in, it took a few tries, uh but then we were approved. And so we're actually getting a number of referrals for that program. Uh to the point where referrals are even for El Cator and for Wakana, right? So that'll be something that we'll have to talk about in the future. That's not in the in the cards for the upcoming um just like here, right? We don't have enough staff to do that, and they don't live in the right spots. I mean, we wanna make sure that we would be very diligent with where people are being located for those services. Um you know, the one, the one thing that we're probably working the hardest on, and it is the most challenging, is right now our charting software. So when we signed that contract over a year ago now, we were a different, different company, different entity. And so now we have one of three here is under our belt. Um the question is, do we buy out that contract? What does it look like? What's all involved? So we're trying to do our due diligence and trying to figure some of this out, what are our other options? Because we have to have someplace to do our charting, do our documentation, because we have to send. Because we have to have someplace to do our charting, do our documentation, because we have to send uh. Plans of care, other things, positional physicians' orders to medical providers and we need a platform to do that. You can't just kind of create that on a piece of paper and do that. Um so trying to look at what is most feasible for us. So definitely that's a challenge. Um we know that is, is an expense that we would like to kind of eliminate, but we're gonna have to do some creative uh work with all that. The other good thing that we are really working on is making sure that um. Some of our expenses, if we can attach them to a grant. We're trying to do that. So for instance, um some of the rent for our building, we're able to attach to. Our emergency preparedness grant. It's considered part of a match, kind of like an in-kind type of situation. And so that's very helpful for us. Um so we're really trying to scrutinize some of those expenses, so. Uh where we're currently at, uh I will tell you that Community Action, they're a great landlord, okay? They're responsive to our needs. People like being able to come to our site. They like being able to have the available services that we have. You know, the community services building, one of the drawbacks there was that there wasn't enough uh drains for the number of sinks that we would need. And we have to be able to ocean compliance and have availability to wash our hands. Uh to wash some of the dirty low closet equipment uh that people from all over northeast Iowa are getting. Uh as well as being able to do the foot salves that we're doing with happy feet clinic. And filling up that type of equipment. So really the services that we're offering, they're very needed. We're addressing that older adult care, okay? Uh and so I've tried to be very um conservative with the budget. We know that we're trying to work on this current year's budget, trying to figure out a few other things. Again, looking at some different data points so that we have a better way to do some predictability um for in the future. So um at this point in time, um you know, keeping our, our stack, staff as we are. Is helping us. We're able to meet those needs. I do anticipate with Homemaker, uh yeah, I think I put it in there that I would like to have a second part-time. I look for that to possibly expand. And again, by keeping the part-time, um it helps to reduce not having to offer the benefits. I know that sounds mean to the, to people who are listening, but it takes away some of the benefits and we get more bodies that are able to. Provide the services. So we're able to do more, actually kind of less, so.
So just to clarify for everyone, right now you have two. Part-time nurses in the first section. The next section is administration, so that's you and your accounting person.
Yep.
So two full-time people there. And then at services to elderly or the home care aid section, you have a full-time and a part-time right now. And one of those is, does some of the administration, right?
Correct. Yeah, so for the services to the elderly, we have the full-time home care aide, so we have a part-time.
Administrator.
Administrator and we have one part-time homemaker.
I put that at two though.
I would like to put it to two.
And the elder care, that's not a reverse service per se, we give very, very little, it's covered return and expect to get expensive.
Uh some of these people are private pay, so yes, they do pay that. Um with the home and community-based waiver program. Unfortunately, it's uh rate set at the state level, it's five dollars and twenty cents for every fifteen minutes. And so, no, it's not a huge amount of dollars, but again, it's providing those services to people.
Excuse me, fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes. Five dollars and twenty cents for every fifteen minutes. So if it was an hour, it'd be five, twenty times four, yeah.
And did I understand that in the approval that you got for. Home care, it would include other counties as an option? Your license board is what you're saying.
We could, it would take some discussion first, alright? We would want to discuss with our staff, one, do we have capacity to do that? Number two, do we have the rights to go into those counties to provide those services? I'm guessing because we're receiving uh referrals for those particular counties, that they also don't have those services in their counties, right? So for instance, if, if we've got uh. A referral for somebody in Wakan, I don't want to just send somebody over to Wakan to provide service to one person. I would want to make sure that we have a whole stack of those people for one day to make sure that we're being mindful of mileage, okay?
Not just mileage, you need to break for the Winnebago County property taxpayers to be paying for the services for the other counties.
That's, again, that's a discussion that happens at the state level because if the state says that, yes, you can do this, we would have to take a look at that.
Can or shall?
We could take a look at it right now. Again, we're not staffed in doing that. I don't have any intention to going into other counties at this point in time. I'm looking at just staying in Winnebago County because right now that's where our need is.
It would be reimbursed. So it would be a cost to us.
It was, well, it would still be a cost because it's not being paid for.
That's five dollars, twenty cents of hourly.
It would just be a dollar. It's reimbursement, it's reimbursed from the state.
Yes.
That's not a high priority. My priority is taking care of our Winnebago County residents. Just sharing that there is still a need out there in other communities, that's, that's the thing. Any questions? And like Barb said, if you've got questions, you can always uh give me a jingle, uh shoot me an email and I'll try to be able to answer.
Here, space, that's the. It's good though.
Yes.
Did you? Are you using more space or did you give up space or it's the same space?
Right now, yeah, right. Uh right now it's the same space. Um we are reconfiguring some spaces and so again, that takes time. Uh we're having to get through some of our other reports that are due first to the state and then we can dedicate the time. To uh take a, taking a better look at the space though.
Alright, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, your agenda, Sean Snyder, Emergency Management Coordinator with the DMA and nine-one-one.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, thank you for your time uh today to let me come in and visit with you. I'm bearing some gifts, uh guys, make sure you just take one, Mark, I don't want to see you take two there, uh pass it around. Yeah, I'm sure you guys will uh read it cover to cover.
I passed these out, these from your box, this is where everyone got them.
Here's another one you can pass around, this pertains to the nine-one-one side. And finally, one other one to talk about legislative stuff. I'll do my best to catch you guys back up here. Um on the emergency management budget, thank you. Guys, keep one here if you want for your library. On the emergency management budget, uh just like it's com- a common theme around the. Our operational expenses do not go up, in fact, some of them went down. I was able to carve out some of those operational expenses and I created a line called uh emergency response. You remember, this was kind of stemming from the missing kayaker incident that we had here in Winnebago County this past summer where. In my, in my almost ten years here, it's only happened a handful of times, but uh when you have multi-jurisdictional response agencies come in and we need. We need local resources, it kind of uh, this will allow us an opportunity to allow me to purchase those unique. Uh resources instead of trying to track them down from the state or something like that. So that's kind of what the, what that line item is, is intended for. Um otherwise, a lot of it stayed the same. There is, you'll see a, a pass-through line item for HMEP, hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. About every ten years, Winnebago County becomes the fiscal agent for that grant. That grant is used to fund all of the four-hour hazmat refresher courses that the emergency responders take.
Except that seventy thousand.
Yes, that's a seventy thousand. That has nothing to do with uh local property taxation, taxation money, that is a federal grant. Comes into Winnebago County and then I simply write checks to uh Waterloo Fire, the Northeast Iowa Response Group. Cover the, the class costs uh of those eleven counties. Revenue side, uh stop me if you've ever heard this this year, but revenue's down a little. Uh the emergency management performance grant that usually take in, uh that's another federal dollar to come in and come and it goes directly against my. Salary and benefits for my, my position here in the county, that's down about ten percent. That's statewide. Tried to, tried to track down the reasoning for that and uh the best I've come up with yet is, is the federal government said it's uh. They're not allocating as much, so it's not a good reason, but that's all I got for here this morning. You see the nine-one-one support in the expenses, that's at fifty-six thousand three oh two. I've had that in my budget now for several years. That goes directly into the nine-one-one fund that we'll talk about here in just a second. I'm going very fast on the emergency management side.
Point out, on the revenues and the emergency management to the back and the front page. You can see there is the support from the city of Decora in there yet, so they're helping pay for dispatch. And then the total property tax amount is that second from the top line, so that is up some, but. His whole budget is in the supplemental fund, so it doesn't affect your descriptions from file seven eighteen.
Thank you, Ben. Uh yes, the city, I'm, I've got a contract with them through fiscal, fiscal year twenty-eight. So another couple of years with the city of Decora, then we'll have to renegotiate that, so.
When we did that, we just did a flat, closed the flat fee, there's flat fee for.
Yes, we used to go off of total calls for service and now we go just off a flat rate.
And it isn't a, it, it has an increase each year built in.
That's correct.
So you can see it goes up three thousand or whatever.
Minimum of three percent or uh the cost of living, whichever is higher. So that's kind of how we modeled that one. Uh the property taxation, thank you, Ben, again, uh. So that, remember, that budget number seems large, but remember the things that the commission has partnered with you guys to uh to do on the nine-one-one side. Uh that's kind of why that budget looks larger than, let's say, three years ago kind of thing. Um any questions on the emergency management side? There's something new, I know you guys, I don't know if you've ever really kind of had the, the nine-one-one budget presented to you, so I want to start that uh this year. Very brief history on that. We, the nine-one-one board used to always hire an individual to do the, the budgeting aspect of it. It was really kind of a three-pronged approach. Ben's uh department obviously was instrumental. Andy Vandermont had a piece of it and then we hired a gentleman uh to kind of do that as well. I kind of approached the, the nine-one-one board and said, why don't I take on those duties? It's not a lot of money, but it's, you know, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars a year in the nine-one-one side of things, uh every penny. Goes a long ways right now for that. The nine-on-one side, there's, it gets very convoluted and Ben can speak to this much better than I ever will be able to, but there's surcharge funded. Amount that comes in and then there's also an opportunity, what's called an operating fund. Surcharge dollars in IO code thirty-four A is very restrictive in what you can use those surcharge dollar amounts for, so we have to be very. Very particular in what we use that, that money's for. Uh last thing I want to do is, you know, blame everything on Ben like I usually do if I, if the state comes calling, so uh I try not to do that, but. Uh the, on the operating expense, we can't inject some property taxation funds through that avenue. And help offset nine-one-one, but it, it's kind of a. A play on numbers, so to speak, you just want to make sure that the revenue side is coming in on the operating expense and there's a matching uh expense. Or excuse me, on the operating revenue, there's a matching expense, so we can. When we get audited, we just want to make sure we can show that that was not surcharge money coming in and paying a, a loan, for example, so. Gets very convoluted, but I cannot thank Ben enough. Uh I'm sure he loves budget time every year because I hit him with about fifty questions on a good year. And now I've doubled my budget, so uh it's a hundred questions I had been up, uh so he's always been good.
It definitely was a team effort for this first year of doing the nine-one-one because. What we thought was appropriate wasn't what the previous person did and. It's kind of a mess coming into it, so.
Yeah.
Not only have we saved the twenty-five hundred or three thousand a year, we, we're paying him to do it, I think we have a cleaner, more, better representation of what. Budget is.
Uh I agree wholeheartedly and like I always tell my commission and I'll tell you guys too every year. I, I don't just go rogue on these things, I, I very much rely on Ben to. You know, go through this stuff with me line by line and he does a, a great job. So I always feel comfortable when it comes time to talk to you guys or my commission that's. I've had an extra set of eyes on this stuff, so. Any questions about that? I want to address a couple legislative things real quick. Any questions on the budget?
For everyone's knowledge. Or as well as the members of the public. Emergency management nine-one budget, nine-one-one budgets are not approved by this board. They have their own boards, commissions. All public hearings approve those budgets, this is more just information.
Thank you, I, maybe I'm way off on this, uh but I always look at the commission as kind of a mini version of, of the county. Own board, we have to do our own budgeting, that, that type of, so. This paper here that I passed around, I just finished up with the nine-one-one stuff that you guys haven't from yet. That's kind of a, you can kind of see that was the approved upon payment schedule for the uh current tower project. So fiscal year twenty-six coming up, uh. That we're, we're talking about now, we have one more nine hundred thousand dollar payment and then twenty-seven will be the final payment. Uh you can see the rough number when this was created three, four years ago, three oh nine, five hundred. I don't, I think it's gonna be less than that because we've been able to save money throughout the project, but that, I just want to give you an idea. I think worst case scenario, that's what that number is, but it should be.
On some of the, we changed. Structure, I mean, you went fiber optic instead of radio at one of the sites, which. Didn't necessarily save money, it was more money than we paid the first year.
Yeah.
So we have to last to pay the last.
Yeah, that was kind of a wash. Any questions on that? I just, I know that's been talked about a few times, I just want you guys to have that. Uh last thing, uh before I open up to any other questions on legislation stuff, uh you'll see this last packet I handed out to you guys. On the emergency management side of things, uh we've tried for a couple of years now uh to try to get a bill passed, we're kind of switching gears. We're calling it uh twenty-nine seat cleanup bill. And uh I just would ask you guys, if you're bored, uh you know, when you're done reading that book, cover to cover. Take a look at this and if you have any questions, please email me, call me, you guys don't want to get ahold of me. This bill has been introduced, it has not been assigned to subcommittee yet, but I fully expect it to go to a subcommittee here soon. Uh so I'd love to answer any questions you guys have once you read it and understand it, so.
Is this going to include, you know, an attempt to raise that nine-one-one surcharge on phones because that's the planning revenue?
Yeah.
And it's a, a whole fraction of the cost. We're looking at about one dollar per citizen in Winnebago County per month is all it. That really boils down to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars between cell phone and landline.
Yes.
Is that increasing and becoming more realistic?
So that's two, two separate things. So this is the emergency management bill, the nine-one-one uh bills I have and I, I talked to Ben just last week about this. So I have not seen a bill uh in person yet, but there is talks about a potential change. So currently, right now, there is a dollar surcharge for every landline in Winnebago County. So that dollar for every landline comes directly to Winnebago County. Well, landlines are decreasing very fast every day, right? Then there is another dollar per cellphone. That dollar goes to the state first, the state keeps about thirty-five cents roughly and then kicks back the remainder to us.
Imagine that.
So uh I, again, I, I'm cautious to say this in a, an open meeting because I have not seen the bill, but I'm hearing that there is a potential for. The landline money to go away, hundred percent. And in turn, they're gonna, right now, I pay some monies to the local telcos for their, their piece of it. So that money, those uh payments that I'm going to make would go away, in turn, the state keeps landline money. And then they're gonna raise the wireless surcharge to a dollar fifty, but the state's gonna keep about fifty percent of it. So it sounds really good.
Good sense.
But in, in actuality, and Ben broke out his, his calculator that sometimes I'd like to throw out the window on him, but uh he broke it out. I thought it sounded like a good deal and he told me my math is once again off and uh it's not such a good deal, so. Thank you again, Ben, for that, uh deflation on a Friday. Told me my math is once again off and uh, it's not such a good deal. So, thank you again, Ben, for that. Uh, deflation on a Friday, but uh. Again, I don't know. I have not seen that, so I.
Basically, the loss of fifteen percent. In the, the increase of fifty, of the additional fifty cents, by the time the state keeps more of it, does not make up for the loss of the landline money. Now, you might argue the landline money is going to.
Go away anyway.
Going to disappear eventually anyway, so.
But I'd like to worry about that in a few years, not to. Yeah, yeah, because that's.
Yeah, I guess if you want me to take a minute, I mean, I brought it up, the nine one one board. Like in year twenty twenty six, we got the three hundred and nine, five hundred left to pay on the deal. And we have the levy already there for it. We have like one, one point two million left to pay on the tower out by John Deere. And we make hundred and.
Hundred and sixty two thousand.
Thousand under that payment year. And we would run out of money in the nine one one fund at about year seven. I mean, we uh, we'd have, we'd have ten more years of payments on it. But if we, if we would, since we have this money already levied and everything. We took a year and a half, we'd have that paid off. Not even, it wouldn't take. It's like twelve. So if there were six hundred here and you'd have another six hundred the following year, that would give us, we could leave our money. In a flush fund and we could build that up for saving for a rainy day. Is what the mouse, because there's going to be expense down the road. And it's, it's, it'd be, yeah.
It sounds like a good idea, something I'll have to look at.
Yeah, that's what I just, we thought we'd bring it, bring it up.
The real question is, we're using county tax money to pay this off. It maybe doesn't show in the state legislature. Maybe you let nine one one go broke because then they know that it's.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
You get penalized for.
Yeah, if you're, if you're trying to be proactive and, yeah.
Yeah, save money for a rainy day.
We're already paying that price.
Yeah, yeah, and I know the nine one board and Ben, you know, we've, we've had conversations. We have such a low interest rate on this loan. Uh, so Ben understands this better than I ever will, but is it worth. Injecting the funds when you have such, you almost have a free loan now, but my concern is. You guys know me well enough by now. I don't want to come back to you guys in four years or something and say. We need another million dollars. I'd rather try to be proactive and keep the money ourselves to where I can. Maybe make it eight years before I come begging instead of four, you know, uh, that, that's my whole hope, I guess. Last thing I'll, last thing I'll leave you with, uh, I know this is. Really thinking outside the box here and I, and uh, we can talk about it more in depth, but after you guys run your first. Budget runs and you'll actually be able to see where you currently are sitting. Maybe we should, maybe we should consider doing a local disaster declaration. Remember, disaster declarations are more than just a weather event. They're a natural or man-made event. It probably is not much more than a headline, uh, to be honest, what I can do for you guys, but maybe uh, maybe it would help. Make a few people up, up for, you know, uh, three hours south here. So just food for thought. Uh, I'm hopeful that you guys will run your first, your budgets, your first budget run, and they'll be like, hey, we're better than we ever thought we were going to be. And you won't have to worry about it, but I I doubt that, so. I'll leave you with this. The commission stands by. Uh, we are always uh. Love and value the, the support you guys have always given us and uh, any way that we can do to, to help you guys, uh. I think we tried to prove that to you in the last few years. We're, we're here for you, so. Hope you like doing this on your own, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
On the agenda, in Smucker, it's Tony Treasures.
I have copies of the budget this past month last week, so you don't need one.
Well, thanks for having me, Ben. Um, I guess I don't really, you guys, I know I break and read, so they got it. I will review, I tweaked a couple of numbers, reduced expenses by like six hundred bucks per year. Nothing major. And I try to continue on the same, exactly what we had. As far as the revenue side, increased. Uh, I think I had a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars worth of increase in revenue. That's due to house, mainly due to house file six, seven, four, which actually increases the fees for title lane. As well as um, adding a lien holder, a lien notation on the title and. Fees for new registration, the tax, sales tax. We'll actually keep, keep the majority of that money, additional thirty dollars per, per title, really. So I've estimated that about a hundred grand for fiscal year twenty six. That would be actually just a straight increase. No, nothing else happening. Basically, just an increase on all the fees.
Unlike other departments, he's actually reporting that there are going to be.
And our investments have done pretty well. I actually amended our. And we've already, already gone above on our revenues for the current fiscal year on our, on our. That's our investments, so. So I, I up that some as well. Now the, all the notes that I've gotten, especially from the state level. And I paid stuff because those interest rates are going to be coming down this year, so I didn't increase that too much over. Fiscal year. I did move it up some, just like twenty five thousand. Any questions on that?
That interest makes quite a difference. Most signs a half a million dollars.
You want to be on the good side, not the bad side.
Yeah.
But it's really hard to forecast out this far ahead. Like, like everything.
Because you can't lock in CD.
I can't lock it in. I, we've locked in for CDs. It's already been accounted for in those numbers. Most of them are coming, maturing. Yet this fiscal year, so. I don't know what we're going to do next one as far as our investments, that's still what we're going to do. But, that's what I'm currently asking. And I guess I'll move on to my next pieces, you know. I would like to, I mean, currently my staffing level is um, not too high. I think it should be, um, haven't replaced. My seat within the office as of yet. Basically, I wanted to talk to you guys about that because I laid out a couple of page. Justification for that, basically stating on a very high level that, you know. Five years ago, Wayne Alter retired and didn't, so we did have seven employees, seven staff. In the office at that time. Didn't replace him at that time. We actually were able to absorb the additional work and stuff. It was challenging, but we made it through and we're just fine. So, um, but now with Brent's retirement. It's already in my current budget, so basically that's why I laid out the justification for keeping that at the same level that it's at. Because I would like to keep the same level of service to the public. To respect a certain level, you know, being able to walk in and actually get things done, not without having to wait. On an, for an extended period of time. So that's my justification for keeping that there. If you took a look at that. You know, we got it, but.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't speak very loudly from time to time. Um, so basically on the, this little. Chart here, I kind of, I actually asked all of the counties, it's in my little justification part. Um, it's the across the top Iowa Treasures Office Staff. Currently, um. I just asked all the counties near us in population from about twenty five thousand all the way down to, I even included Howard County, which is. Less than half of our population at nine thousand three hundred, um, but they're staffing levels of that. And then over on the right-hand side is that population to staff ratio. Winnebago County being a population of just under twenty thousand. And us at uh, six members in the, in our office staff for treasurer. Were actually still the highest population to staff. That's even at maintaining our current staffing levels. And this is everybody, all of the counties from Plymouth down to Howard, from twenty five thousand down to. Well, under nine thousand. So.
So Winnebago County is getting a good deal even with replacing the, a person, because you're getting. Service for a higher amount of population with fewer staff.
Do you know, these are all thirty five hour work, we, you know, these?
Um, I don't know the specific on that. I think the majority of them are actually. In Buck, I mean, I know a few of them, yes, yes, and I don't, but I don't know that specifically.
What's the trend of online uh, rather than in person through the, to the treasurer's office?
Trend, I mean, everything is more going online.
Even so, both for any registration issues and or tax, tax payments?
Correct. I mean, the tax payments majority, I mean, has, has been history, has been through an escrow company. So that escrow company is going to continue to pay those electronically. But now we still process all of that, so that processing time is still there regardless of whether the individual is actually in the office or not. Same processing time.
True for.
One may argue it could be more, but it, you don't actually have the customer standing in front of you.
If I actually, if I can online pay my property taxes and do it through the state website. Is that pretty much seamless come through to you and it's done, or is it require additional work?
It's, it's, it's mostly would be, um.
The same amount of work whether you're standing there or if it comes through the.
We still process it the same way, on the electronic date.
To some degree. I mean, if you just go in and actually pay it on the IowaTreasures.org site, that electronically gets. That, that gets transferred in and we do the electronic transfer for that, so that does alleviate a little bit. It isn't a major time sequence as far as that's concerned. I mean, it does, we do definitely see some, but really the efficiency as far as being accurate is actually even. Even more beneficial on that aspect because, you know, you go in, you pay your taxes on there, you have the exact right amount versus. You know, John Doe writing a check out for X amount, they write it for one thousand one hundred. When the real amount is one thousand two hundred. So then having to track them down, call them. Make sure that they understand that they're actually still a hundred dollars short on their tax payment.
So the same thing would be true of, of your vehicle registration, things of that nature.
Correct, correct.
Is there a reason why? Part of the vehicles are done in your office and part of them are done in the recorder's office?
We handle everything that's on the road. Recorder's does all the off-road stuff.
Including UTVs that are on the road.
And it gets really confusing because if you buy a boat, a lot of times you get a trailer.
Right.
So the trailer is.
That was right, so the trailer actually touches the road, the boat does not, so the trailer is our office. We hope the boat doesn't.
Seems like that ought to be something our legislature should address. It seems like an odd implication.
So if anybody have any questions for me?
Chronic ones, you can do those anytime rather than having to deal with a person understanding great.
That's correct. Then same with mail, I mean. Definitely with COVID, mail increased for sure because people just weren't coming out and out of their homes. So they just mail their payments in, so. Like I said, sometimes that does cause additional work because they don't write it out correctly or that's something or. For whatever reason.
The chart you just gave us was with an additional, not additional, current staffing.
At the current staffing level, which would mean hiring somebody at this point, at this point.
With a halftime work rather than full time?
Not really, because of the fact that the halftime, um, in order to train somebody. And the amount of knowledge that comes through there with a property tax, motor vehicle, driver's license, doing all of those. I mean, it just take, I'm still learning at six and a half years in the office. I still have stuff that I learn every day. So in order to do something at a halftime, I, I feel like it would take more work away from. What my staff is already doing in order to train somebody who's only there part-time, which. Because then I feel like they're going to, eventually they're, that person's going to find a full-time job and leave anyway. So that'd be just continuing to train somebody over and over again, is what I feel.
Every question there?
Sure.
Yeah, sometimes we've tried to pay things uh, online. We just live right here, so it's really close to come in. But it seems like online, we've had to pay more, like dollar more or something. Where does that?
For the license. So if you're talking specifically, are you talking specifically like more vehicles or property tax or?
Not sure which one it's been, but yeah, it's one of those. I think maybe motor vehicle.
So motor vehicle, if you were to pay online, it's a twenty five cents difference that you would pay online versus coming into the office.
Total or per vehicle?
Twenty five cents per transaction. Say you did six um, vehicles versus writing a check to us, say, you were going to write a check. It actually costs you less to pay online as the individual. Than it would to actually mail the check because you're paying a twenty five cent as long as you're using a check. You do an e-check, you pay only twenty five cents service fee versus the whatever sixty five cents for a stamp stamp.
So to me, it's a dollar or something that I'm.
The dollar, um, if you're talking about motor vehicle, there is a, because we have to mail you a registration, the sticker. So that would actually, but that's actually already on your statement. If you come into the office, that, that dollar gets removed off of there, but.
There's postage fees included on the statement.
Correct.
And you spend actually, maybe I don't know for sure, but half the people who come in to pay in person already have it written for. With the postage on there, so you're giving change back because.
That's what my wife was just going to do this weekend. I said, hold on, Gary, you did this last year.
Yeah, we either adjust the check or give change back, whenever. That's the service we provide, so that happens all the time, but does that answer your question?
Well, if we have any other questions, we can get ahold of you.
Yep.
All right, thank, thank you. And David, next on the agenda is Steve Vandertrigg, EMS funding request, warning. Ben, did you give him or did the paperwork?
I did, I did email it out and.
I didn't, I did not make copies, excuse me.
Okay, no, I, I emailed it out ahead of time, so they did see it, so I'll say that much. I don't have to actually print it out.
Um, so my request from last year, we, you granted the EMS association five thousand dollars. Um, and to work with that, we use those dollars for um, initial training. Continuing education and equipment. I'm glad to say that we actually have four people in D and T class right now. Um, one in Hampton class, um, one in Wakan class that just started. Um, I think like two weeks ago, and then uh, two that are in the elevator class. All will finish before. Uh, sometime before May. And um, so we're looking forward to having those people on um, at least the volunteer side. Um, if not the paid side, depending on uh, how they work out. So um, two that are in the Oshin Castilla area, um, one that works for the. Um, one that works for the, um. Jail and, uh, then another one that works between Eastern Star and Wind Met, um, and another job. So.
How many twelve wait now in classes?
So four in classes right now. So it's more than what we've had in, uh, the past few years. So. Um, let's see, in the request that I did request, um, that part of that funding is for four thousand dollars. For EMS essential service education. Um, I'm still having conversations with the, uh, leadership at the hospital concerning that because. Um, that would directly affect, oh, or there'd be, um. Correct, uh, education needing to be given because the hospital is currently at their max for. Um, the three forty-seven A hospital, uh, where they cannot, um. Tax for EMS and that meaning, um. If they were, I think it's three forty-seven, uh, they can actually just tax twenty-six, twenty-six cents. Onto their tax act scene and not, nobody have any say or anything. Um, since we're three forty-seven A, which most of the critical access hospitals are. None of those tax dollars can be used as EMS or to fund any type of EMS. Um, even though they may be hospital-based, they can't market that or put that in any line item as EMS. So. But I'm work, working with them to figure out how, uh, best to proceed with that. Um.
Maybe if, if I can, Steve, just so everyone knows, cause probably, you know, you're working with other emergency management. In other counties, how they're implementing it. So you're become knowledgeable on it. But a lot of people don't know that there is a process in the state code.
Correct.
If the voters could choose to, uh, vote on a ballot question that says that emergency management is an essential. Essential service. And if that is approved, it allows a way to add either a property tax levy. And or a s- income surcharge tax, um, to help fund those services. So that's what he's talking about when he says essential services. If we want to go with the ballot question and. Add those extra taxes, what's the best way to do it?
Yeah, um, currently there's about three or four. Well, I think initially when I started this, they said there was five. Um, really for us, there's probably two different options. Um, and most of the counties that are, uh, doing it are doing it under, uh, IO Code four twenty-two B. And, um, so that allows you as the board of supervisor. Supervisors to make in a, um, resolution that makes EMS essential service. That then cre- creates a EMS advisory board. Who then sets a budget for those dollars and determines what that dollar amount will be for a taxation. And then. That's all, that all has to happen before it goes for, for. So, uh.
And four twenty-two D is new option in the last five years.
Correct.
And so it isn't something that had been utilized before. So.
Right. Right now there's twenty-two counties that have it. I think they had twelve counties headed on the ballot in November. Um, and I would say seven of those passed, um, the other five that did not pass. Um, in my conversations and hearing about successes and failures. Um, a lot of that was driven by, uh, the ones that didn't pass it. Uh, did not have a true, but this is what we're going to do with those dollars. Uh, and those were, the ones that passed were anywhere from, I think it was thirty-five cents. To seventy-five cents per thousand with a one percent local, uh, income tax surcharge.
So this is something we would have to do through resolution, not, um.
It's a, yeah, it's a resolution that starts the process.
Right.
It can take several months and.
Yep.
And, and the way it will affect the hospital is different too. Cause I mean, right now you have EMS.
EMS.
Ambulance services from neighboring county, the neighboring states that are coming in to service parts of our county. So how would this work?
So Spring Grove, example is Spring Grove ambulance bills the Highland Township. Um, I wanna say it's twelve or sixteen dollars per person. That's in their coverage area, which they figured out to be forty-five people. So.
How, how would this work? I mean, we don't know. I don't even know if any of the counties that have passed it are border counties anyway. So we have to figure out all the logistics of. Do we, does that mean they can no longer provide that service? So we have to do it. And then does that mean that?
A, a lot of this, uh, funding goes back to, um, what is needed by the service. So. Um, talking with Howard County, their option that they're looking at is that. That taxation generates enough to buy a new ambulance for. One, one, one year for Cresco, one, one year for Riceville and one, one year for Leroy, Minnesota, which all cover. Uh, parts of Winnebago County or Howard County, I should say.
So the idea is that he's asking for some additional budget money to help if they get to this point. Educate the public is.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, if you're gonna also look at those that didn't pass. They probably weren't giving the information to the public. They needed to know why they were voting on this.
Like I said, the meetings I've been to, their biggest conversation was is that. Um, there was no planned budget on how those funds were going to be spent. So was it going into a fund to make sure we have new ambulances? Was it going into an equipment fund? Was paying, uh, personnel wages? Um, and so all those things are options within that, but you have to have it. From that EMS advisory board has determined that. So that may not be that we, you know, send all the money out of town. Um, is right now Pulseville covers in a district, um. Gunnerson, uh, covers a small, very small district. Cresco covers the largest portion. Um, from outer county and then you have about, um, two miles in, right across the. State line that Harmony, Mabel and Spring Grove all cover. So right now the figures I did, uh, Wind Med covers five hundred and fifty-two or fifty-eight. Square miles of Winnebago County. And we're now the only transporting ambulance within the county. Any questions?
Will this impact, would that taxation impact the ability to recruit and train additional EMS personnel?
Would, would it? It would add to that. It would add to that ability. It'd add to the ability to get out. Um, get ha- actually promote classes to be held. Um, right now there is, they're more or less held on a as-needed basis, um, through NICC. Um, I'd love to be able to see, you know, you, you graduate high school, you need to be coming at least in EMR. Um, it's fifty hours. It's just like CNA, but it's about how to save somebody's life.
I think this is something that will. It's make, making sure we take the steps to make sure we are doing it right rather than.
Correct.
Jumping in and then figuring out how to swim after we're in there. So it'll, it'll come to pass right now. EMS is funded by the townships. But they have a capped levy for fire and EMS total. They can't, they can't exceed sixty-seven and a half cents. And a lot of them spend all that money on their fire contract, but then they don't have any money for ambulance.
EMS is not essential. So they don't have to, they don't have to do anything. So.
Are all the townships up to date in?
They're not all setting the same rates.
No, they are. Fire rates are, are across the board. Um. And that's because they're covering for fire. They are not covering for EMS. They may, the code says they may. Pay for EMS.
So like he expressed, some of the northern counties are paying some money out of, and that's coming out of their fire money, their available fire money. To those Minnesota towns to provide ambulance service.
And a lot of them are taxed and got the full levy rate that they.
Correct. And some of them are, are taxed all the way up to max plus a, um, additional for tort insurance.
And it actually more have maxed out in the last five years than, than was even before that.
Right.
Most of them now, there's only a handful that aren't maxed out. That's cause, I mean, you know, cause you get the funding request for new fire trucks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not cheap to provide fire service. So, and that's required.
And then, and just so you understand, I have a brand new ambulance. Cost me two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We got it July of la- or January of last year. And, um, the board, um, allowed me to sign a contract. To get a remount ambulance of my twenty-sixteen, um, for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That's mainly just taking the box off, putting a new chassis underneath it, underneath of it and giving it a new paint job.
Does that include freshen it?
No. No.
Do you have them all up and running now?
No.
I didn't think so.
You really wanna know? No, I don't. I have a, I, my newest ambulance is in the shop with a transmission code issue. And I just had one, uh, I came back from Iber City at two o'clock in the morning and said I had thirty-four miles before limp mode. So.
It sounds like we need to move on time.
But we have it. Steve is, Steve is.
I, I've been the main driver of this and right now we're, we're at the hospital's. Their leadership direction on whether or not they wanna push because part of their conversation when they increased. The, or went to the max or the hospital asking. Um, that was part of the conversation that was had that they provide ambulance services. They provide EMS. Can't use those dollars on the paper. But I can talk about it and that we do these services and these services and that was part of it. So.
So it's in the works and Steve's been working at least a year, I think, on this. There was some consideration to try to push, hurry it up and get it on the ballot this last November, but. Not knowing where everyone sat and how it's gonna play out. We didn't wanna go too soon. So, but it'll probably happen eventually.
At some point I'll be back.
All right. Thanks for giving us the answer.
Yep, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Arlen Franzen. Morning, guys.
Morning, guys.
Maybe we need a budget in the chair. About yourself, um, papers. Once again, Arlen Franzen, Winnebago County Care Board, whatever here, asking for funds. Again, for our fair to help, uh, fair to winnebago county. Mark Knutson is, um, been on the board probably ten years, probably. Nine, we've both been there long enough, but it's fun. We enjoy doing for the community. We appreciate every help we got, whatever. So. Uh, this year I'm asking for thirty thousand dollars. Uh, part of the reasoning is that, um, everything's going. Up higher and higher and higher. And, um, in, in here, once again, I got our proposed budget. Once again, a budget with guidelines is supposed to try following by, whatever stuff that. I still can't get it to make us money on the budget yet, but, uh, we're trying on a few different things this year. So hopefully, um, was, might do a different ticket system as well, what, what, what we're talking, uh, one night.
Yeah, it'd be an E-ticket, one-night charge. Um, reach show versus the button all week. Cause we had so many people resell the buttons every night. Resell, resell, resell. And one night we had a hundred fifty buttons for sale on Facebook. You know, that people, we're losing our revenue. And the only way we can figure out how to do it is just go to a one-night charge anymore. It was really good back in the day. The button was fun. It was cheap. You know, but now everybody caught on. That was too good, too good a thing. So we're hoping to generate more dollars by doing that.
The drawback is it's gonna cost, uh, people in accounting more money again. We did not wanna do that. And. Uh, once again, it's an experiment for long year. If it completely fails, it's gonna be readjusted again, whatever. And. You know, uh.
Basically, basically if you only were planning to go to one event, you'd probably get by cheaper.
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Yeah. And you don't have to buy the button and then try to sell it after you've gone to the one event. You could. So, so in that respect, it might be a better deal for some.
Well, that, that, that's what we're hoping. We're, 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 we're gonna get a little backlash. I mean, we all know how that goes. Whatever, somebody won't like it, but we're gonna do our best again.
Spin button for as long as I can remember anyway, I guess. Even when I was a kid, they had the button, but.
Well, thirty-five dollars for a week to pay your bond. You couldn't beat that. I mean, it's, it's good for the county. It's good for everybody and.
Bring in over two hundred thousand dollars entertainment in five nights too.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
It's kinda like it says nothing.
And, and that's part of the problem with our expense too. This, this entertainment's getting too high price. You know, to get anything of anybody out here, whatever. But the county likes it and it brings people down again, whatever. So.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're gonna have, um, well, we still, what we could tell you is we're having races again on Tuesday night. Like we usually do, whatever, which is put on, we run it ourselves now and, and, and as you can see, we've been improving the fair. Uh, the racetrack and appearance of the place and everything else too. Um. Wednesday night, we're gonna do the, uh, Universal PRCA rodeo. That's a little different one than we had the other years. Trying to mix things up a little bit, whatever. So, and then Thursday night, we're gonna go to the NTPA. We're, uh, toying around, adding one more class to it. Cause people would like to see four-wheel drive diesel pickups. So. That's in, in the works. So once again, that, uh, that come, everything comes at an expense, but once again. If the community wants it, we're gonna try doing whatever we can because gotta remember it's not our fair, it's everybody's. So we try, you know, helping everybody, whatever.
Please everybody a little bit of something different.
Yep. And we do got a Friday night, but, 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 once again, we can't say the name. One, one of these years we're gonna have it when I come to this meeting.
It's getting real close to getting released.
Yeah. It's just.
There are two national names, good, good country names. So I hope it all goes.
And we try picking something. We got a committee of, um, probably about five or six, whatever that we, uh, try. Guessing what people are gonna wanna listen to. And so far we've been doing pretty well. I mean, once around, you get somebody that. Not everybody likes, but we try mixing it up, whatever. You know, I still think a rock eighties class, man, would really be fun to have.
Actually tried two years ago, rock eighties for, we had some nice, you know, Rick Springfield funeral names been locked in. And when it comes right to it, they, 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 they pull back and they pull their contract from you. They, they can pull their contract that they wait for the show. That's. It's very challenging getting entertainment for singers.
Exactly.
Lot of patience.
And then, as you notice, I add on here, uh, I got a list of, uh. What we donate back to the four H and stuff with our building and stuff. There's, it, it's just a rough li- list of the times we let in that we don't. Generate any money, but once again, we're doing it for the four H. Cause remember when we originally put that building up, it was for the four H and the FFA. And we just wanna prove to the county that we're still sticking to what we're supposed to be doing. Cause when we ask for sponsors, it's hard to get them and. We appreciate what everybody does because it's, it's a lot to give to that, keep that thing running. But, you know.
And it's important to note about half of your money you get from the board each year goes into paying premiums for the. For the four H.
Yep. Yep.
Kids that are doing.
Correct, yeah. Yep. And, and, and we've been telling the community to the, the supervisor, well, county's giving back. They help you too. So they should be appreciative of that too. And so hopefully people thank you guys too once in a while, but you probably didn't thank them as much as we. You know, so, but, um, and then I, I also got the list of, once again, of, uh, counties, whatever. They had us at thirty-eight. They had us at thirty eight thousand last year, they added both years together, because we were, we're, excuse me, twenty for twenty, twenty-five and eighteen for the other year. So at least I'm getting a little closer and putting the right numbers in there. You know, so, but, um, and, and then I just highlighted a couple of the local ones, whatever, the local counties, what they get, whatever, too, and stuff like that. Just you got an idea, whatever, it's, it's not a guilt thing, I just, it's just a knowledge, piece of papers, whatever, so. Once again, we, we're just asking for a little bit more, I don't know, whatever you can do, we, we greatly appreciate it, everything we get out of you guys, you know, goes to good use, and you can see, like, our judging fees and, uh, even getting the people here to judge, it's getting a little more expensive. You know, e- everything keeps going up for some odd reason, it doesn't even go down, so.
Would it be safe to say it's not Blake Shelton in your books?
It'll let it, but it, it depends, how much money can we get, more support.
Then they'd be about, uh, you'd be looking at about at least one point two million for sure, for ninety minutes.
Yeah.
It's a ninety, it's a ninety minute show, we get, we're likely to get seventy-five minutes and and then they'll, they'll cut that sucker off right to the second, when they're singing, it's crazy.
And, and it's hard to get a singer for under seventy thousand dollars, then you got all the other added fees to them, too.
Yeah.
So feed them and house.
Exactly, yeah, yep, then we got to feed them, too, yep, it's just. Yeah, but, but from all we've been hearing from the community, they've been liking what we've been doing yet so far, so, you know, once in a while, we you know, rent a little snake here and there, but, but you gotta, you know.
So, speak to me, then everybody wanted to do it.
Exactly, right, yeah. Yeah. Anyway.
Any other questions for the guys?
How's the rest of the building? Is it increasing as time goes on?
Yes, we're, yeah, we're starting to rent it, we're, we're up to sixteen hundred dollars to rent it for like an event, uh, Saturday, Saturday or whatever, uh, a weekday, whatever, you know, well, weekday might be a little more reasonable and stuff. We've been, uh, getting a few more weddings in there and stuff like that, and, uh, one of the concerns was that, uh, if we got races and a wedding, that they can't hear themselves, but that's been proven, we've had some weddings, you cannot hear them in that building, that building was built good enough there, and, you know, so we're trying to keep both things there, and if we could get more use out of the building, will also help us, you know, pay for some of our stuff, but once again, there's only so many events there, and.
There's a fair amount of day, day events, too, now that we've got.
Yeah.
For this year, and, you know, the weddings is crazy, they said.
Correct.
For just coming here in twenty-six, or.
Yep.
So, it's amazing, yeah. I mean, you try and find something that can put five, six hundred people in real company, you know, up seven hundred.
Yeah.
And put them on, you're about the price.
Well, exactly, well, once again, when we built it, we, we want to keep everything within reason, because we want people to come here, not, not go to different county, not say anything wrong with the other counties, but we're supposed to support this one, so that's why if we can keep our prices down, that'll work better for everybody, I guess. Yeah. Thank you.
Sounds good, yeah, thank you.
Yep. Because it's fair.
Next item on the agenda, Andy Vanderloon, our county attorney, we've got a whole lot of things here, where do you want to start?
Well, um, I sent Ben resolution and a packet on, um, Darien Power. I printed off the map for that, too, if you want to load it around, it's, um, yeah, I think it might be, it's just the top eighty feet of that parcel that the county owns, so.
Here's the resolution, it's be setting a public hearing on February tenth, ten thirty, if you want to do that.
Um, if you look closely at that beacon photo, there's actually, I think you can see the power lines are already, this is a gold house. I think they're giving a, this could be a good mine instead of a surface mine.
I'd love to approve. I'll second that.
February tenth, public hearing, yes.
February tenth, thirty. I have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for the Darien Power deedsman, February tenth at ten thirty. The resolution. Aye. Well, no, it's just, we're setting just a public hearing.
So.
Yes, it is. Aye, surely.
Aye.
Aye, Steve.
Aye.
I also.
I think the other items in RFP I sent out to use for the appraisal, pretty straightforward, I think. The only thing I did put in that I wanted to bring to your attention was that the appraisal is confidential. I put in that the appraisal would acknowledge that and maintain confidentiality. While you're in process trying to sell that, um, uh, that's information the public does not get, because it jeopardizes your ability to maximize the sale and to negotiate a price, so. That's a little unusual, you can certainly take it out, but I don't advise.
Who needs a motion to send out the RFP?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to set out the RFP for property appraisal.
Do we have to accept, you see with the dollar amount, if it's just to put a amount to have appraisal, I mean, got the limit on it, I mean.
This is simply, uh, RFP, through selected company, to do appraisal, and they're going to give us an estimate of their fees.
Yeah. Typically, you're not. You don't have an obligation to accept any of them.
This is going to hurt DCH building, South Fifty-Two.
How will we solicit, uh, proposals? I mean, is there a group of realtors we plan to send it to, or do you?
I think you're looking at certified appraisers, so I would suggest that you look in uh, five county area for a certified incentive toll.
Uh, when I, when I discussed this with, uh, Jim, he suggested that there was a, a good commercial appraiser that was down in the Darien area, there was more, you know, there's a number of, some are only good for big blocks and so forth.
Yeah, I, I know there. We have used a couple of them on tax appeals that I've handled for Jim, and he can certainly select those, but I think I would also give local people an opportunity to prove that they have the experience and ability to do the work.
I'm just wondering about the specifics of it, is there a website that all of them are members of, or how do we get it to all of them? How do I know that if I email this out to, and I miss someone, that they don't come back, well, why didn't you send it to me?
I can work with you on that.
Okay.
I think, uh, in answer your question, I think there is a certification through the state Realtor Board that you can utilize. And they may post it for us, too, I don't know.
Okay, so local, my opinion is that some of the local, local knowledge is going to be limited to the current perks, comps that are in the area, or comps, and that, that does, I mean, when I asked Jim, the only current sale that he was looking at was, was the Pepsi building that had sold, and it was not really a comparable.
I think you might have some there a couple of years out. That would take some adjustment, but I think they could be comps. Sweet Park right now, there, um, you've got some other, in the industrial park, I think. I think you'll find some, um, and part of your job is going to be taking the proposal and saying, um, we don't think qualifications are there for this project. I mean, I don't think you want to rule out someone before seeing what they offer.
No, I think we have to offer it broadly.
Yeah.
Yeah, all was in favor of the RFP, say aye.
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 Was pause same side, motion carries unanimous.
Got a whole lot of changes from past years, and I did send you the material I normally would send out to the county board for some explanation and background on some of this, um, if you have questions.
How far out are trials booked, Andy, so you have any idea, like you say, is it lined up for criminal prosecution? We've got six months left in this year, how much, or five and a half months left, how much? But the court's booked out that far that you have some real feel for what you're going to be dealing with, or?
Right now, I have a trial scheduled June eleventh, July thirty-one. Yeah, they're booked out, uh, the criminal cases, there's one year speed trial limit. Typically, we don't get past that, but they, we have one that's bumping up against it on February nineteenth, so. There, I, I've got the spreadsheet at the office, but I think you'll probably have twenty-five to thirty-five on schedule right now, that spread between now and August. I, I will tell you that, um, I am impressed by our sheriff's office and our local police departments and the, um, work that they do and the, um, uh, level of dedication that they have, that there are some weeks where I wish they'd just back off a little bit. We have done, I think, we're down a little bit this year, but I think we did a hundred and forty search warrants last year, we're up over a hundred and eleven in, uh, twenty twenty-four. And we're off to a very good start this year. That doesn't include the county attorney subpoenas that we issued for, um, bank records, uh, phone records, that type of thing, and, you know, that's probably, I can think of one case where we probably did thirty of those, trying to locate, uh, you know, information as part of their investigation. Like I say, they do a great job, the investigations are thorough. You know, they're good about, hey, we need this to prosecute, or we don't have enough to prosecute, they'll either go out or they'll say we agree, and, uh, that's where we're at, but, um, like I say, they're, they're very active and, uh, carries over in the, in the level of quality prosecution that we have. One item I will point out, I, um, reduced the deposition costs kind of substantially, but be aware that in a case like we have had in, um, for a second degree murder case, uh, where there's going to be fifteen or twenty depositions, I will probably be back here to amend the budget, um, so. Um, we have most of those left to take, we may get, uh, may get them in under the existing budget, but stuff like those types of cases have a huge impact. I think, um, last year, Ben did, we adjusted my budget about sixteen thousand, covers me HR work. I have, um, tried to cover some of that yet, rather than referring everything to Holly. I don't think we've gone, I think we've got close to sixteen.
I haven't looked at the details, but, uh.
Outside of the handbook, that's been the biggest crotch she's been involved in. Once in a while, um, I've asked her to cover some things, it's just a time.
On the, on the update of that, uh, board policy on, uh, mandatory drug screening for DOT.
I'm going to have her write that.
Yeah, she, I saw Beth mentioned to me, that showed me what some of the work, the product that she was working on. I wonder if there's something that our consultants already have, and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask her to, to run that, they, they do. And I don't realize that ours is due back to ninety-five.
Ninety-five, that's what she said.
Despite my starting as county attorney back then, I have no recollection of that, so. Anyway, I, those are the types of things I've asked her to do, um, and I, I think, um, I think we've been able to manage our costs with that.
On a project by project basis, rather than just pay some monthly.
Correct.
Mob, you know. Was it, like you said, the handbook, was it bigger project, and she put in a lot of time on that one, but then there's been a lot of months where we don't even see a bill from that.
Yeah, that's, we don't want to go afield of some of the language in that policy change to make it feel like it's going over into where we'd be drug testing regular county employees.
I think we keep it as a CDL policy. I mean, we just need to update what we have.
See, whatever the else, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
So I can stay a little longer, so I'm done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or you don't want to be there that many days, yeah. What was that?
Next up, on the agenda, John Holmerson, supervisor, six projects.
This is within your box today, so I think everyone should have it.
He may want to give us this, an update as to what it's been like with, on the, the building department, with the spinoff of the Smith Building and takeover of the Community Services Building. How that affects, you know, where it impacts, what are our plans going forward for the courthouse and community service and so forth, how's that impacting things, the changes that we've made?
Well, I guess a lot better, I mean, uh, Chuck is doing a good job down there, that's a, feel I stopped on to talk to him, if he needs anything, you know, he does a real good job. Be great when we get things moved, first of all, it's the goal. Uh, for up here, I guess it's going, I mean, we're lucky, we ain't got a lot of snow, otherwise I'd be outside and not on the inside very much. It's for getting stuff, I get a bid for doing third floor, if the flooring done. Working on the project to get, you know, the leak fixed in the back of the roof up there, but, uh, for hell, I guess, it'd be great if I could get another person, I told Ben to leave the budget alone, we'll see how things go in August or July, see, you know, I got summer health and part time, you know, but I don't know, when's going to go to college, and I don't know how long, you know, basically hard to find someone that's willing to step in. No, I, I think for what you guys are doing, yes, I think it's a lot of light direction, you know. I think if we had kept the Smith Building, I would think we would have been able to keep up and do a very good job, you know, so.
And you mentioned Chuck at the Community Service Building. He does a lot of the cleaning and you have a separate person that's doing it. There's a separate shovel labor contract, a separate lawn contract. So basically you've been able to get that off here. You don't have to do the Smith Building. You don't have to do that once. That helps.
All, yeah, a lot, so.
There's no way you would get it off of him, that otherwise.
No, no, so, and then working on projects and stuff. I'm not a computer guy. I'll, I'm, I get by, yeah, that one. I got, I'm on my feet with Pam, so that's.
The only person that's probably less computer savvy than you would be Dave.
And you still have to watch the DHS building.
Well, I make sure the toilet, yeah, yeah, especially when it's really, really.
So if we are able to get that moved, we will cut out some other expenses out there that we.
Yeah.
I forget how this, in the overall run, but.
Just so you know, they just approved a proposal to get a, get the, get a appraisal on that so they can start the process of getting it sold. So that's in the works, but doesn't move really fast.
Well, like I told Ben, I said, leaving my budget alone, I don't know how you guys' finances are or whatever it is, but like I told him, I says, if you come up with fifty thousand extra or seventy-five, earmark that for like the, we need to do something with the back of the big courtroom and the ceiling and stuff. And like I told Steve, I said, I don't spend money just because I got it in my account. I always get money back in the end of the year. I like to, you're paying so much to start renovating them and the big circle, you know, I got fifty thousand to do. I'll see what I can get done and take it in steps.
So we don't have to get in, if we get into the big project of trying to do something like that, then it brings in, you know, a lot of outside expense and we've got issues still to maintain with, you know. Ben can, you know, sometimes the wind is howling enough that you can't hardly hear on the phone through these windows. And we've got a lot of just general maintenance issues that we can't continue to defer and we still don't know what what maybe the end result on the courthouse roof. We've got shingles that may be defective. We got open areas right there. We've got, certainly we have the aesthetics of the main courtroom upstairs. Ours a little bleak with ceiling tiles missing and things of that nature, but we don't dare go in until we have liquid water to be able to look for roof leak again. Mark, Mark and I understand that real well. We've crawled around up there.
And that courtroom, that's a major.
Yes.
That ceiling, because they put in that false ceiling, so up above that is wires and ducting. I mean, they just figured, oh, no one's going to see up here. So they made a terrible mess of the original ceiling.
We may, yes, over time, we may be able to try to put that into some bite sized pieces that would create, you know, some continuity to it and spread it, spread it out over a number of years and still be able to be totally functional without going into the big bite of a, of a huge project and then.
We, I think we also need to look at grants to help with that.
Exactly.
I think there's a frustration or the R C, you know, somebody bigger than us needs to help us.
Laurel Freed, her wife. Freed helped us with, we got a hundred and ten or a hundred and thirteen or something when we did that grant for doing the restoration of the tower portion of it.
So I think you should actively start looking at that. It's, it's going to take a while to procure one if you were lucky enough.
It's not like everything, when somebody starts getting grant things, then prices kind of go up and they want a little bit more of it.
And then you pay someone to do your grant work and you have to have an artifact and all that.
Well, soon your project is.
It gets, be expensive.
We've, see how things go, we're probably wise to leave the budget alone and allowing for some flexibility, but we can cut it if we have to. That'd be fair, John.
Yeah, yeah.
The good news is we have shed one building and we will, we will shed another.
One's not going to be cleaned out real quick. So those of you that haven't been in.
Oh, my. How many dumpster loads do you think that might entail?
More dust and walls and that.
I mean, is there, is any of it valuable or is it something where you maybe only walk away from it and say, all the people who buy it that.
Officially furnished?
Yeah.
I was trying to move it all.
I mean, when will they get what they need down at the new building? I mean, do we need to spend the time and money to need it or can we, can we put that as part of the sale as that? Because there might be somebody who buys it who's going to bulldoze the building anyway, so why would we spend time cleaning it up?
And some of that is pretty well amused as far as the dust and stuff like that. That's why Mark and I were there last Friday looking at which one, what they have, how it can incorporate into the setting down here. These pieces are, it's really being moved.
I think it's worth considering that once you get moved what they want rather than spending weeks of trying to reclaim things that may or may not really be worth anything that just they part of the deal when you sell this.
Oh, just a question, are there like office chairs or conference chairs that aren't going to be moved?
Probably not, really. That wouldn't be, I mean.
I mean, John can look through it if there's something.
There's nothing.
If there's a handful worth saving, we, he's got a storage unit where he puts things and then when someone needs something, he can get it, but if they're, they're done.
We did want the storage availability from the secondary road department, but we never did hear back from them.
I mean, they're just, they have cameras in the kitchen and chairs, so.
Do they have a lot of chairs in storage?
Oh, yes, like, they wanted all them old chairs out of the big courtroom, so I got all them out there. So had to decide what we want to do with them, you know, and, no, I usually try to, somebody's the old wooden cat chairs. I got, I usually try to, if somebody needs a good chair, I'll as well get that, get rid of another one or, you know, buy some worse.
You're looking at recycling cats. I need for.
Some chairs. Yeah, yeah, I can look out there. I told everybody if they see something or need something, let me know, so.
Yeah, kind of recycling, the table that they use for break rooms, they've got a mishmash of some of the worst.
Liabilities. Well, I'm sure a lot of them were things that people dropped off and be recycled and reuse. It's not just recycle.
If the county has some of those chairs that are not, they're old wood ones, but just that used.
And I got a few spots on the sidewalk around them. I'll have to get them fixed, you know, cracks and such. Yeah, yeah.
Separations.
Yeah, so we got to get the grants passed. I got a guy coming to look.
You want to, would you explain that when we're talking about the separation? Mark and I are aware of it. I don't know if you, you are.
On the step?
The steps down there.
Yeah, I told him, I said, you know, for what it costs to put that steps out there, maybe we should just look at it someday. Just put a wall there and put dirt in there and eliminate these steps, you know.
It's not, it's a very steep, yeah, we don't want to get high.
Yeah, even if.
Well, it's good for the fence for us.
Yeah, we have steps that, first of all, we're hitting a separation. We've got steps that slope downward. We have different, we have different rise of those steps. We got a, we don't have a handicap rail.
And it's only about a hundred feet up to the brand new steps on that corner, so.
See what it costs to put a wall there and just fill it in and, you know.
Might be a good idea.
Even a gate, even a gate would be a safety solution.
Yeah.
Figure out.
I can, I can see what it costs both ways and that's what you guys told.
Yeah.
Well, you leave a step and then you still have to show.
One shot, just one shot and fix it and be done with it rather than, yeah. Somebody tries to climb over the fence and kids get in there and they get hurt and they can't get out and start falls. That's temptation. Somebody throws something over the fence, some kid does, well, now we get in here and get it.
Speak of its grants. That's my take on it.
There.
Must have grandchildren.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, John.
Yep.
I, I think another comment too I have is in the whole G O here. I think the I T is really enjoyed having that extra space. Glad we were able to utilize. There were some rooms that weren't, weren't really here. It's a solid plan.
Yeah. It stays better if you're using it rather than if you don't have it, meaning it's, you better be careful of it.
Yeah. I mean, I know that the dining, old dining room in there, there's a few people that use it for eating. But if we needed to have them use the kitchen, if we ever needed to remodel that space, I mean, I could.
Could do it off a space if we needed it.
If we ever needed it, I mean, that would be another space that could get worked.
Or we have that space that Ben uses.
There's a, there's a lot of election stuff stored in there too. Yeah, it's true.
Thanks, Andy.
That's one forty-five. Nice item on you, Joe. Do you need the county just here?
I didn't know for sure he, Michael had sent out his budget last week. I didn't know if that was something he wanted to cover or not. Looks like he's going to hand it out.
I got it. It's, it's, this is all but final here. One round and around.
And I know this last week and this week, really long agendas, so I think there's a couple of organizations that we didn't have submitted written requests that just haven't presented to you yet. It'll be on, and, but we've had all, with Michael's here, we've had all the departments. And we'll have a complete list of the requests from organizations. So at this point, our next step will be actually looking at some of those numbers. Because we haven't really made any, you haven't made any decisions on any of those things. I'll have an updated one. The only one I didn't have on there, I, as of last week, was the Fairborn. So now I'll be able to give you an updated one of those and you can look through that next week. Give me some direction on some of those. Have some of those empty employee positions. Do you want to leave John Holmerson's person that he just requested? Do you want to leave the conservation person? Do you want to leave the treasurer person? Once I get those, then it'll be a matter of when we can decide what to drop raises.
Stuff. Um, I guess I'll start out with the reports and then I go through the, the budget a little bit with you. Uh, still working on the raised grant, uh, working to get layers of support. Steve's been a help on getting a couple of people for me, so thank you, Steve. The initial budget assessment for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six has been sent to the board. That was done last week. I've gotten a little bit more final with my numbers. I'll forward to talk about that in a minute. Railroad flat car bridges coordinating, that's still going, subdivision data. Uh, same as, it's been for a couple of months. Looking to, looking to work on that here after the budget. Upcoming union negotiations were discussed through email on the board. I think we're going to do it on January twenty-eighth. Email events have been finalized. We're still working on the unique U E I number. Bridgeway shop improvements, insulation may be done today. And then there's boiler installation is still left. And then S S four A will be meeting in March. So this, this report has now been abbreviated quite a bit from last week. A lot of things have reached my notes. I've reached ahead, so. Probably be expanding on it over the next couple of weeks as, as things come to my desk, but I want to certain finishing up some of these projects that have been on here for a while, such as that subdivision study. With that, I kind of work at Department Twenty, the secondary road budget, and I'll just go over a couple of highlights with you. You go to the, the revenues, I worked with worked with Nick and Ben and made sure that all of my numbers that I have on my estimate, on my estimates were driving with, with the DOT. So this is numbers that where before I hadn't, I, I had put an estimate that I thought might be reasonable. This is actual estimates from real people that make decisions on how much tax is coming our way. So the road use tax received, those numbers come in and oftentimes those are somewhere between three and ten percent off. Usually it's low. And how that fits into the whole, whole budget, if you go to the expenses, you'll see the the all of this balance, the expected balance, and at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we have nine hundred eight thousand and then at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we have what will have one million fifty-one thousand dollars. I would expect with the road use tax fund generally being a low ball estimate, that those numbers will be a little bit higher, but I intend to use those funds in some degree. The, the target that the DOT would like me to be at is only twenty-five percent of the road use tax funds and the expected receipts, less roughly eight bands. We would like you to be at roughly two bay balance.
I'll, I'll say right now, it's been, we don't have it's been, we're behind for a while. We're lucky, we're looking at a one million balance, which is healthier than it's been for several years. Still isn't where it should be, but it's getting there.
It's, it's getting there and one of the things is, I, I don't, I'm not in a hurry to get there based off of the budgets in the past. The one million dollars, just, I'll call it feels like a reasonable number. I would like to be more in line with the, with the projections by the DOT, but, but I don't, I don't think I need to hold back on projects in the meantime. So that, that's going to be my goal going forward over the next couple, you know, next couple of years. I'm not going to promise two billion, because like I said. Minus.
Going up.
Fifty million behind.
Yeah, I, I don't really want to, I really don't want to get behind on the hard surface roads. This, this base stabilization that I'm trying, if that works, the sooner we get that in, the better. I mean, there's just the time value of money for these products is, is something that's not necessarily line items, but that's a, it's a real, it's a real cost. If we don't, if we don't keep up with our, our program, so. Yeah, I, I, I think that the, the one million dollars here, just a couple of things where I would probably, as, as the road use tax receipts come in, I might alter, I want to put more, if you want to put some more gravel on our gravel roads this year than last year. I've already pledged you for that a little bit, but again, it depends on what the cost comes in for, for the amount we put. But that would be a place where I want to use some excess. And then I have one of the things you'll notice on estimated receipts, we get two million dollars coming in from this, these bridge replacement funds. I figured out how that works. That's, that's just our, how we bridge program is from a state. And that's just basically a glorified reimbursement. And I moved all of our projects from two thousand, this will be twenty twenty-five, over twenty-sixty, the left, over ones, D thirty. And I moved all of our projects from two thousand fiscal year twenty twenty five over one point six, the left over ones, B thirty two. Uh, and Northland Road that I'd like to get done, and I've kind of shifted those numbers to the twenty twenty six year, um. Does that happen for sure, I don't know, but that, that gets us, what that does do is it shows a nice balance on the, the nine hundred eight thousand. Um, it just. It gives the, it, it gives the, the perception of a increasing balance throughout my, but it could be that those projects start a little bit sooner, so. And I'm still, I still have not scheduled those, I wanted to make sure that, um. You know that I'm not holding this as, as gospel yet, so. Um. With that, I'll take any questions on the budget. Um, or if you wanna just wait until you have a chance to review this budget, 'cause not much has changed every, I, there were, were some reductions in the expenses that I, that I took out to. Trying to get to that billion dollars. Um. But. Yeah, I'll be looking at, um, the road use tax fund, it's already, I think. We're already in excess, and I do, uh, my cash flow analysis that I do about every week, we're, we're project, I'm projecting roughly. One, one million plus dollars on June thirtieth. Just based off of the typical cash flows year in, year out, so. And I have, I have that sheet, if you would like to see that sheet.
Mention any stabilization, are you considering attempting some of that product there?
Yes, that, that product has been purchased already, uh, we're looking at, uh, it's the permazyme. And looking at, uh, town line and, uh, uh. Whitetail, whitetail road, and.
So those two, you're, you're considering increasing gravel and then permazyme on that?
Yes, it would be the, it'd be the treatment there, so.
That's great.
Yes, uh, they grind up the rock, um, and put this, uh, it's an enzyme, mix it in, um, it squeezes the, the. Plays and the small fine particles together and holds that, holds the, just the gravel in and locks it in place and makes it a, a harder. Surface and thinks it's supposed to last ten years, so limited, limited. Maybe that's. Uh, you can blade it.
You just keep re-mixing it by blading it?
Yeah, you blade it a lot less, it's the whole, the whole point, so, uh. I don't know how that's enough, you know, for maintenance activities, how it's gonna hold up, the idea is that you're blending a lot less. It should be a lot more resilient to three saw cycles, um. A side benefit is, it's not dust control measure, but it does, it is a lot less dusty, it holds the dust in, so.
Oh, which portion of town line are you considering?
Uh, fifty two to middle caliber, so.
That might stabilize it slow.
Yes, and then I was, we have some leftover base one, which is another similar product, I was thinking, I'd have to work with the vendors at base one, but perhaps use that for metalwork. So. Those are the three projects that I have in my head, so I don't, I, I, that hasn't, I've done zero work on that, it's just, that's, that's conceptual.
Did we spend one point eight, no, we didn't spend that much.
We did, but, uh, it was, that was all of our, I mean, the granular, the, this, all the rock, all the years, so it's, I, I, it's control. The, the whole year, so yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're upping the. We're upping that a little bit, I'll write off the bat, um, but. It's, again, this is a, this is a start, and, um. It has some of the things I intend to do on there, but by no means. I, I can't hold myself to this without knowing whether.
There hasn't been a year since I've been auditor where there isn't a budget amendment for a broad department, so. So you, you just know that there's something that's gonna come up and there's gonna be something that you need to fix, you didn't plan to, or as Michael's saying, he's gonna have some extra. Or use tax money that he wasn't in his original budget, he'll wanna use it on a project, so. Let's deal with that, it'd be, it's a budget.
Do you have any indication what, what we may be facing in a rocky increase for the, for that fiscal year?
I don't think, uh, Mr. Bruning would let me know any of that, um, and I was hesitant to even bring up my intentions, but. Um, I do wanna make sure that the citizens know that they're heard, uh, for gravel roads. I know that.
A lot of that can depend on the price of fuel.
Correct, correct, so. I'm not seeing anything that says that fuel's gonna go a lot higher, but that's not, that's not to say it won't, so.
Can we up for, uh, supplement funding?
We cannot, we cannot put any more money in the road.
No, but I mean, the rural.
The, the, for the roadside, uh, management, yes, so current year you have three hundred thousand in there, and I think. I distributed that budget way back towards the beginning a month ago, so.
I have.
I think we put, I think I initially put in three hundred thousand again, but knowing that. The rural fund is under the same restrictions as the general fund, so. You know, Michael said that if you got two hundred thousand, you'd be happy, so if, if that fund is too tight, that's the first place we probably go, but we'll see where it.
And need a pretty substantial period.
Yeah, so last year, then last year, so right in the current budget, it said, we budgeted a year ago three hundred thousand, but in amendment earlier this year, we bumped it up to like. Four hundred sixty thousand, 'cause we had a lot left over from the year before, the. You know, I guess that Michael's the last person to change that, so I can talk a little longer probably, but the House File seven eighteen restrictions. And we haven't felt it yet, but could come to play over the years if this, if they don't make additional changes, because. The maximum, uh, transfer to the road department is based on the value. But we know that if the value goes up too much, they dial our, dial our levy back, but that doesn't affect the maximum transfer, so. If you keep transferring the max every time the value goes up, you're increasing, and at some point. They're gonna dial our levy back to where we can't afford to transfer the max anymore. So that will, at some point will come to pass, it isn't close now because like that roadside, we had more money than we needed to in the rural fund. Actually, two years ago, when we did the budget, when House File seven eighteen was in its infancy, I told you at that time, we could lower the rural rate ten cents. Still be fine, but we didn't, because we knew that it would lock us into a lower rate when that bill went into place, so. So we built in a few years buffer by doing that, but it, at some point, that, well, that gap will get bigger and bigger. Now, the one saving grace we can, uh, we have for the rural fund is that's where our, um, one cent, the county share of the one cent sales tax money goes into the rural fund. And sixty five percent of that is to directly offset property taxes, that's the way it was passed on the ba, or the ballot question. And that has continued to grow from year to year, so even though your property tax levy gets restricted, we have had additional sales tax money in that. In the rural funds to help offset some of that, so, so I think for now, we, for the first run, I'll put that in at the. I think I put it in at three hundred thousand like we did for the current year, and we'll just see where, what it looks like, at some point, Michael can only.
Spend some.
Spend, yeah, you can only, you can't, you can't use that money for on-road projects, and so. Can only buy so many things and justify it, so at some point, if that has to come down, it has to come down.
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of, I wanted to kind of bring that up, I, I have, I sent in that email to, to the board this morning. Uh, kind of a, a roadside, um, called idea, it's a budget. And incorporates the, the last, the fiscal year twenty twenty four before the, the actual fund was set up, but, but. Funds were set aside, uh, for equipment that we bought. That, that equipment, there's really nothing else that needs to be bought anytime soon. Um, I worked, I worked with our, our roadside guy, and we kind of came up with what it is we need. Um, and the scenario I kind of lined out on that was if we wanna hire mowers to, to mow in, in place of the roadside guys. Um, we think it's. It runs about, uh, seventy five or eighty thousand dollars a year, if we were to, to pay these guys to mow. Um, and so. I created a, I'll call it a, a budget just for that department nineteen, and that, that run, just based off of how we. Bought chemicals and, and seed and all the supplies, came up with a budget of a hundred fifteen thousand, so. What I would prefer to use, uh, funds on instead of, eh, instead of, you know, this roadside program. I'd prefer not to use secondary road funds on a local shop. And that's, I don't know how to, I don't know the ins and outs, and I think I talked to you about this a little bit, Ben, but, um. I, I wanna figure out, uh, uh, if we can, a way to get that, that local shop redone with funds outside of the, um, so. I think that would be a better use of, of county funds than, than putting money in for hired mowers. So.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think you can use, uh, rural fund money for a building project.
Right, my, the general infrastructure.
It would have to come out of the general fund, rural fund ha, is, has restrictions on what it can be used for.
Mm-hmm.
And building a shop is not in there.
Right, that's not these funds, and so.
Ken, so.
The D H S building.
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, there you go, um, you know, we've said that now for, whether it's the large corporate project or windows at the courthouse, or.
Yeah.
Or the shop at Logan's, I mean, there's a lot of places that you could use that D H S money, but I think you prioritize some of those.
Put it back into an infrastructure, yes, way I, I would.
You sell infrastructures, you put it back into it, so.
Just so you know, my, I was penciling out some of those things, would I. Not getting, we aren't even having appraisal yet, so, but we're gonna be working on a first run of the budget, I just put that sale, that property at five hundred thousand, and then put. Five hundred thousand penciled in to pay two fifty to pay off the.
Building.
Spectrum building, and then two fifty for some other generic building project, and then if it sells for more than that, you have more for your other generic building project. If it sells for less, then you don't get as big a project, but, but I, that way it's in and out, and it isn't going to affect your. Operating budget, you don't want to, I don't wanna show a sale of that for five hundred thousand, and that we're only gonna spend two fifty for the spectrum, and the rest is just disappearing into our budget. 'Cause then next year, we're like, well, how did we make this work last year, well, because you.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it show in one, out the other, and what actually sells for can affect, whether it's the logo shop or the courthouse project or whatever. Um, the good news is, is if you sell that before July, by June. We can have two hundred fifty thousand, which is the way I have it budgeted right now, from that sale, to pay the, pay for the spectrum building, pay the last payment on that. That means that you have two hundred fifty thousand more operating money. To increase the rest of the general fund, 'cause you paid that two hundred, first two hundred fifty out of your operating budget last year, so. You might only have eighty two thousand dollars of new property tax money, but you got two hundred fifty thousand, it's freed up money that you didn't spend last year. That you did spend last year, you won't have to next year, also have Tim coming in and telling you, you're gonna have a hundred. Fifty thousand more fees and, and interest and those kinds of things, so that eighty two thousand seems like a. That's a worst case scenario, you, you're, you are gonna have some other new money.
So there's some, if you put it into wages and increases, then you're having to cover that.
It'll always be there, but, yeah.
Where we won't have this additional.
And we know. Well, the two fifty, hopefully you aren't buying any new buildings again, so the two fifty will always be available. And that's always gonna be there, once you get that billing paid off, and so that's why I'm hoping that we get this sold in time to make that payment, so that. That two fifty is available as back into your operating budget like it was before you bought that building.
Here's my, I just wanna say on the rural supplement, is there any way, 'cause I mean, we clean the ditches out. Is all the trucks, all the dirt from cleaning the ditches, is there any way they can take one new truck, purchase it with the road general, rural general supplement fund? I'd be very cautious on that.
That, that's, that's the only.
I am.
I mean, the one thing we, one thing we could do that we aren't doing just because of the administrative portion of it is, you could take Todd. Our roadside manage, roadside management person and pay him out of that line, but then if he gets in a dump truck and plows, then you need to. They, you need to.
You gotta knock out.
Yeah, yeah, and subtract that out and still pay that portion out of the road fund, so that's what gets more difficult.
Yeah, and, and there are, are projects we can, you know, these culvert extensions and things like that, that we could. Go and solve, I just don't wanna put, you know, make work in a budget, and just. I mean, we can make. You know, I'd say put effort towards improving the, the hydrology and everything else around the, around the roads, but, but. I just don't wanna put that in here with, um, without having this discussion first.
What about before, before the couple, three years ago, that budget was only a hundred and thirteen thousand. It was included in the road fund but out of the rural supplemental feed, which. Has always been a kind of a hassle trying to show the road fund without, so that's why we moved it to its own department, um.
And I tried to show kind of what I was thinking in that email.
So a hundred and thirteen, and you increased that 'cause you had some extra road fund money. But that doesn't mean you have to just keep using it and blowing it, making work, you don't need to do that.
Nick Rissman, when he built that sly shop out there, did a lot of that in-house, if we went to a mowing contract, which would free up. The labor of our roadside crews, and if we took the, the construction skills and separated that to some degree out, can we use something like that to do a project like.
That basis of the. Yes.
Of the local shop.
Yes.
You know, I mean, that seems like Nick saved a lot of money in how he approached that.
That's, I would definitely would like to do that, um, a couple of things on that, I, first of all. Uh, Nick's road guys, he, he felt confident in their skills, I, I would have to just, I'd have to work that out with the guys, so I, I can't tell you on a.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't tell you who's gonna be volunteering for that, right, right, I don't, so I don't, I don't have that in my back pocket like, like, um, Nick did. Um, the other thing. Um, the other thing that. Um. I'm cautious on, on this is. We have, let's say it's two hundred fifty, so that means I'm running off a rough estimate that it's gonna cost. Assuming we use some of our labor, it's still gonna cost us four hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're still two hundred thousand that would come, that would be coming out of the. The budget, out of the secondary road budget that's, that's not going to rock, it's not going to a lot, it's not going to a bridge and things like that. So. Um, yes, I want to do that as a base case scenario, but we're still looking at, at, uh, a pretty hefty. Sum of money to, to bridge that gap and. Just talking to a couple contractors, that four hundred fifty is a low number, so I would, I'm gonna guess that it's gonna be closer to.
Yeah. You could hope DHS billings sells for seven or eight hundred thousand.
That, that's wicked great. That, that is definitely the, and, and that would be a reason to have those mowers for just one year. I was kind of thinking that.
Or even a pilot for a segment of, to see how it actually even physically works or does it work. You know, maybe you pilot a section down by auction and use one of the mowing contractors and take a segment of road.
Hire somebody to sit in the tractor.
Yeah, we've had.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna avoid that, that contractor. I, I think I worked with you a little bit before, but I think that I'm gonna try to get. Um.
Employees, we have tractors.
Just, yeah. Somebody to sit in the tractor seat.
And continue it.
Yeah. There, there's a couple of guys that, that have expressed interest. Um, I. Haven't worked, uh, with a superintendent to, to really nail that down because I don't know. I want to make sure that the, the funds for. Uh, the roadside is gonna be there to do that and then that everybody's kind of.
Premature to make that decision until we get through the budget. In a month from now, we'll know a lot more about where the budget is.
Yeah, that, I, I kind of showed that and where things lie and, and, um, just kind of, like I said. Worked with, with the roadside manager to, to come up with some numbers that we think is gonna be used. Um, we, in fiscal twenty-four, spent twenty-seven thousand, uh, on prairie seed mix. As a one-time expense, it's gonna be lasting us for three years because we get the, use. The UNI program to get, to get more. Um, so that's. We have enough to cover us this year. Next year we might, uh, request the same, but I don't know if we'll get the same pricing for what we got. I think one of the reasons we, we spent that money was it was a good price, that mix at the time. So. I kept that out of the budget. It's pretty, it's, it's. It's a pretty, I'll call it skeleton kind of a budget as to what, what it is that you need. Uh, again. We can, we have. We have plenty of projects where we can, we can armor the channels, things, extend the culverts. Make, make our roads better that way. Um, but we want to make sure that, that. That the county funds are going to the right use and that, that. Put too much of a burden on, on, uh.
The new equipment this year might, is that two or three trucks?
The.
Are be for the next, for twenty-five, twenty-six. Six hundred and seven.
Okay, so, new equipment.
Is that, is that a couple of trucks that we've already ordered?
We have, we're, we've got four trucks on order and so the, the agreement was, was we would pay upfront for the chassis so that. Dons would not, uh, would be able to get payoff.
Yeah.
Their supplier. So we paid for the chassis right away and, um, I've worked out with Dons, that would be the first. The payment would come at the first claim in May.
Oh, okay, so that's.
So that's it, that's, that's still in this year, so there's, and then after they fin, after they get the trucks and everything else, they'll. Put the boxes on, get everything set up, and then we'll pay for the second half of the, the truck.
In fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six.
In fiscal twenty-six, yes. Um, but if one of them comes before then, because they, they get, they arrive at Dons. Late April, takes April for four to seven weeks, we might end up getting one beforehand. Yeah, but, but that's how that agreement's scheduled and it's. I don't know what's gonna happen, but it's reflected in those numbers that you're looking at. So, yeah, some of the, some of the truck payment is, is in fiscal twenty-six.
Probably roughly.
What's that?
The box is probably roughly.
They're, yeah, they're roughly half of the, the truck, so. And the outfitting of, of the wings and everything else, so. Yeah, that, that three fifty number is. I, I front-loaded a little bit, uh, the box, I'm like twenty-six, which is. Again, probably not likely, it makes the. Otters balance, uh, low. But, so I, I, I foresee that that number is gonna be. Um, a million plus, but with this, uh, uh, based off the cadiz, it's probably gonna be a million plus. The, at June thirtieth.
They want to add anything else?
Okay, and if we want to set up a two-person on any questions meeting, I'm open to that at any time. Haven't done one in a while, so.
Thank you. A few miscellaneous items next.
Who's here to the job? Wanna have something he needs to?
I'm meeting with him after the meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, so I got Jake Hovden's signature on this, so, um, I know you had. Basically agreed to it, but I figured it would be good to have an action to actually sign the lease. Speed. For the current. Person.
I'd move to approve the farm lease.
Motion second to approve the farm lease to Jake Hovden. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a poll, same side. Motion carries unanimous. Next up, VA office updated job descriptions.
So those I had, uh, Lynn sent them out to, what, they'd sent us, they've been approved by the. VA commission. Um, I have copies of them here with the red, if you can see what's changed. Most of it has to do with their, uh, code changes in training requirements.
Through both job description pages.
Let's not second that. Motion second to VA office updated job descriptions. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll, same side. Um, so, set a public hearing for the Candy's extensive zoning request?
Uh, yeah, so this, uh, public hearing request came from Tony Phillips, so I don't know anything about the actual. Zoning request, but, um, he's asking to set that for the third February at ten o'clock AM.
Don't move.
Second. The motion is second to set public hearing for the Candy's extensive zoning request for February third at ten AM.
And it is a resolution.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Steve.
Alice.
Next up is the Washington County Historic Preservation Commission annual CLG report.
CLG, CLG stands for Council Local Government, so they're an official, uh, Historic Preservation. Commission of the counties. They file an annual report with the State Historical Preservation Commission. Um, I didn't print the full report, it's many pages and colored photos and so on. I did email it out so you could review it. Um, so I would need a signature, uh, on the certification page before they send it into the, uh, date.
Who to accept the CLG report of the Historic Commission?
Second.
Motion second to accept the CLG report of the Washington County Historic Preservation Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a poll, same side. Recycling transition, possible action?
I put this on after last week because you were gonna, basically the committee, the two-person committee said that they had some more work to do. Before giving a report, and I didn't know if you had anything more to report or not, and I, I put possible action because I thought there was maybe an exception to policy. Pay that you wanted to get approved or.
Well, uh, we're still accepting applications, I believe it's open to the managerial position that we had applicants.
Other, uh, application period for the manager.
That's, yeah. Speak on that, I, uh, uh, were you offering Kayla additional duties and pay? And that I think has to be approved by a full more, so.
We had talked about, discussed that we're gonna offer that. Um, she is, uh, leave. This week.
This is week.
And so her additional pay would start next week until we fired. Again.
Would be the same as what we approved, recommend the same that we approved this, on that last special situation, circumstance.
So, and she was open to that. So I would motion to approve that. Can we do this just case by case?
That's why.
Accounting policy, it's a case by case.
Specifically say exception to policy because it isn't the policy to always pay someone extra when the.
When that dollar amount was.
Three hundred dollars.
I, I think it's exceptional, you don't have a manager, we didn't have an assistant manager in place. Which going forward, I think it's important to define structure with every department, but who's next in line, who's gonna take charge, so. Um, anyway, I would motion to approve that.
Second, second.
Right, we have a motion is second to approve the three hundred dollar a week raise to Kayla, starting next.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Until the hiring of the supervisor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was a poll.
The other issue, uh, that's we talked about is. Are drivers there to be more parity with, uh, we feel we get better applicants. Attention if we get parity with the road department drivers, since they're requiring CBL out of the. Uh, people working there, mainly because they can cross jobs. And so, uh, we'd like all of our floor workers going forward to have a CBL so we don't have to. We can substitute and hopefully cut positions that have more efficiency with what's going on. I don't know what the difference in pay per hour is. Um, we talked about, since we would not be union option. Maybe slightly less per hour, but, um, we have had numerous people say they didn't apply because of the. Pay discrepancy, and basically.
But we've always filled positions.
We.
Well, okay.
Kind of.
Well.
You have to be here all too.
And so, it's, I, I have no idea about the legalities of taking them out of matrix or using the matrix that the road department uses.
And, and we maybe just by changing the job, job description to, uh, require a CBL and send it back to Conry. That matrix will automatically score the number.
Correct.
Because I, the drivers I know already were higher scored than the foreworkers.
Right.
Yeah, so, so that you may not have to do anything with the matrix. Um. Be careful comparing them to the road department because that is a negotiated position plus. And they, they are on a call, go out, they're against.
And that's why I said. And that's why I said when we brought up, well, we should use what road department uses, and this is different because this sort of be less per hour, but maybe higher than what they're getting now.
I think, I think if you add that to the job description, it will automatically pump. Well, I'm pretty certain there's already a job description in the recycling department for the drivers. And the CBL already is higher than the floor workers, so you could, by adding that in, I'm guessing it's gonna automatically.
So we didn't, look, somebody could look at that and see what that additional thing revealed or Conry had. Uh, we had, we did interview potential driver going forward because we need them. Uh, maybe by having more full-time drivers, you would be able to cut down on the part time. Uh, because we feel a transition of people coming and going and coming and going is as efficient as. Somebody's there eight hours. But, uh. By restructuring where we want our director or manager, uh, to have a CBL, they could also then fill in and. Cover sickness or extra routes.
Sure.
You're getting some applications sent by the supervisors.
For three, I think.
For three. Looks like we have some pretty good numbers, and we still have one curate.
Yeah, well, potentially, yeah.
Right. Budget discussion. Just couldn't throw this out here because surely I have to. John, after a little while. For wages.
Is there any guessing?
Negative two, I mean, tongue-in-cheek.
Really don't know.
You, yeah, we really don't know. Um, I think you have to negotiate and. And you have to consider that the fact that you need to retain employees too. I mean, you can't. Can't, like you said, tongue-in-cheek, but you gotta have enough that it's fair and then we put that number. I wouldn't recommend finalizing anything on your union negotiation, say, well. We'd like to be able to do this, but we need to do a first run of the budget and get that number in there and see where, where it comes out. Um. We've had very, I mean, you can see as your departments have come through. Everyone has been very careful about asking for increases in the non-payroll sides of their budgets. I mean, there's been very little of that, so. All of the new money is gonna be available. For payroll expenses.
All the eighty-two thousand.
Well, plus. Yeah, plus the two fifty that we don't have to pay for that building, plus the increased revenue that. Different departments have brought up. Um.
With the treasure one, a lot of that. But the treasure one, a lot of that's interest, so you don't wanna.
Well, only fifty thousand of it was interest, the rest. Fees was over a hundred thousand.
But the interest accumulate those, even knock that down to three hundred thousand two years ago was forty. So you you can lose two hundred thousand dollars there.
It's true. It's true.
That's a hard one. That's that interest, that interest, that interest one.
Yeah, that's why I think he conservatively only added fifty. Next year, he actually put a hundred and fifty in the current year, cuz he already knows that he's got. Getting it for the current year, but next year he only, he bumped it back down.
I mean, the CD rates are falling.
I think uh, I think if you go into negotiations and at least a tentative agreement is. You know, I don't know how much to say in a, but you come up with a reasonable amount, I mean, not double digits and not a freeze. Um, you come up with something in the middle and. Everyone seems to be okay, we put that into the first run of the budget and see what it looks like.
And this be like a, was the last contract for three years.
Yes.
So this would be another three years.
Well, possibly.
Potential to that.
I mean, that's the max you can do, I've, John will advise you on that, but that's the normal max, is three years.
You can do five, but we've always done three, I think.
And uh.
Nine-one-one, we did three and a half there, but they were, they wanted to get another employee. So we cut the employee out, they were at three, so we said. Cancel off the employee, we gave three and a half, so I'm saying we were from two and a half to three, and I I don't know. That's where I would be.
I would think if you.
Cola is two and a half and we'll see.
I think if you're between three or four. And we put that into the first run of the budget, I don't think it. It's gonna be as bad as you think, now there may be. You may not be able to prove everybody's requests, I mean, there may be some things that you. I mean, if you, so like I mentioned earlier, there's some, still some. Full-time positions in budgets that aren't currently filled, and whether you need. You wanna include those or not, that's something you maybe decide after you do the first run of the budget, there may be some that you know right now, I mean. If you know that the landfill is not going to fund the. The conservation for that grant, and you're gonna put that, that's gonna go to the. To the uh. Cycling, I I think that is, if you know that already, why don't we just move it ahead of time? And I don't think I need to know that today, next week though, we're gonna start talking about some of those details, and. You want John Hoverson's extra person, if you want Tim's extra person in there in that first run, and then we run it and see.
What do we run with?
Right, I'd. I would like to start with a reasonable number that you think is appropriate, cuz every time I change, every time I change. Uh, payroll amounts takes me days, cuz there are so many lines. Cuz it's not, it's FICA, I PERS, and the payroll lines, and so I don't wanna run it, oh, let's try two and a half, let's try three and a half, let's try four and a half. I don't wanna run it that many times, cuz it's a lot of. Work.
That's a fair request.
So if you can come with what you think is reasonable with for the first run, and if it just doesn't work. Worry about that, I think that if you settle on something between. Throughout three to four. And then we're. Short a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, you're gonna find that in some of those other places rather than. For that root reducing the percentage.
Let's say three percent would be a fair start.
All right, community service buildings updates, like I said earlier, Mark and I went to D H S, we went to that, we met with. Receptionist there, which was kinda nice to know. She told us what she needs, what her needs were. And so we can facilitate that. Couple things there, shelves, worth positioning of her desk. Changing the one side window that's there into a reception window. Uh, along with a.
Yeah. I mean, all lines there just.
Very minute changes, but it's just things that they need in order to operate. Like I said, measuring of some of those other desks and stuff like that, and finding a place where they will.
Plenty of cubicles and side panels, just, you know, there's just a lot of.
I think, I think they they said, at least one of you reported to me that they said, and. Pretty obvious between what we have there and what they have up above, we're gonna buy more.
We don't need to spend now, and she said, no, they don't, cuz they're just, there's way.
It's crazy. Between the two.
So I'd hate to see the dollar amount that was spent there. That's.
With nobody in the court, nobody in any of the other offices gets new equipment. It's pretty hard to justify. For the state freely.
About where we're sitting there, uh, any other committee reports?
Policy board Thursday executive. Got conference.
We should open it later this week.
Okay, uh, how about consent agenda?
I've got minutes, got the B A monthly report, sheriff's tourally report. And two liquor license, one for the zipper and one for uh wind golf and country.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, motion carries unanimously. To adjourn if there's nothing else.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
You need one of these sign?
The one I need you to sign is. Fair board requested thirty thousand, and the current year they had twenty.